Okay, this regular meeting of the Waco Independent School Board is hereby called to order. All items which may be discussed or voted upon this evening have been posted as required by state law. I really just do want to extend a warm welcome to everyone here and to our television viewers. The Board's purpose is to set goals, listen to reports of the superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, personnel appointments, and make policy for the district. We are not here to make management decisions or solve problems of individuals. Management is the responsibility of the superintendent and her staff. And if you would do so right now, if you would turn your cell phones to silent, I'd really appreciate that. I'll find mine in a bit and send, turn it to silent. But really, we want to just really have appreciate the time you've taken to join us and for your interest in Waco Independent School District. Uh, let's see. Este junta regular de Waco ISD está convocada. Les extendo un amable bienvenidos a todos los que están presente y los que no se reservan por televisión. También les quiero compartir que todas las conferencias está disponible en la página de Waco ISD YouTube el lunes después de la conferencia. En ese página pueden escoger su idioma, así toda la información que fue descargada está disponible para todos. Por favor apagar su teléfono celular y les agradecimos el tiempo que compartir con nosotros y su interés en Waco ISD. The Waco Board, we go by, we follow a code of ethics. And the code of ethics is honor and conduct. So we, as the Waco Independent School Board, will always tell the truth. We will share our views while working for consensus. We will respect the majority decision as a decision of the Board, and we will base our decisions on fact rather than supposition, opinion, or public favor. Moving on to item number two, oath of office. Mr. Patton and Mr. Bledsoe, could you meet us in the front?
As a notary public, I'm honored to administer the oath of office. Please raise your right hand. In the name and by the authority of the State of Texas, please repeat after me. I state your name, do solemnly swear
I, General Patton, do solemnly swear
that I will faithfully execute the duties
that I will faithfully execute the duties
of the Office of Trustees
of the Office of Trustees
of the Waco Independent School District
of the Waco Independent School District
of the State of Texas
of the State of Texas
and will to the best of my ability
and will to the best of my ability
preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution
preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution
and laws of the United States
and laws of the United States
and of this state
and of this state
so help me God.
so help me God.
Thank you very much and congratulations.
Okay. We're gonna take some quick pictures. Okay, moving on, welcome, Mr. Bledsoe and Mr. Patton. We're so excited that you're continuing and that you're beginning your journey here with us. Thank you. Item number three, public comments. Is there anyone signed up for public comments? Okay, moving on to item number four, moment of silence and pledge of allegiance. If you would please just pause with me as we take time for prayer, contemplation, reflection, and/or meditation. Pledge of allegiance, our pledge leaders.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Board would meet me down front.
Tonight's pledge leaders are Jaslyn Putts from Caesar Chavez Middle School. She is an eighth grader whose favorite subject is math. She enjoys cheerleading, playing basketball, volleyball, and drawing, and when she grows up, Jaslyn wants to be a pediatrician. Next is Kavion Johnson. He is also an eighth grader from Caesar Chavez Middle School. He loves math, cross-country, running, working at his family-owned business. His teachers say he is a natural-born leader, and he wants to be a principal when he grows up. Do they take their pictures good? Okay, sorry, I'm new at this, y'all. I'm just going with the flow. Okay, now we are going to recognize the UIL State Speech and Debate Students. University High School student Derek Thompson. He captured first place in the prose category at the Regional UIL Speech and Debate Competition and advances to the state contest. And this is his teacher Savannah Jones. Joan Becerno. Did I say it right? Ajane, I said it right when I meant, read these originally. Aiden. Aiden Durante, right? Durante, okay. Daniela Ricardo, okay, sorry. And their teacher Michelle Linker. Students that were not able to be here tonight are Jose Adaco, Miguel Lopez, Theodore Adaco, Matthew Everett, Marisol Ledesma, Jaslyn Salazar, Jeremy Williams, Judith Arias, Annalise We have so many that we have to get them all together correctly, yes. Go for it. You can dance it because your socks match your tie, that's what I'm saying. Okay, so now, we're gonna do University High School Maddy Trojan Band members qualified for the state solo and ensemble contest with several earning a sweepstakes award at UIL concert and sight-reading. Members competing in both are indicated with the asterisk on the screen. I am so sorry, but I'm gonna try to say this the right way. Leobardo Gama Sarato. Angel De La Cruz. Hector Toca De La Hoya. Way to work as a team. Next, we have our UIL All-State Choir Solo. Waco High School students advanced to the UIL All-Star Solo and Ensemble Contest to be held in Austin on May 24th. All Waco High students advanced in the Class One Vocal Solo category. Grace Ipago. No, I saw her face, I'm sorry, I butchered it. Our University High School students qualified for the state UIL All-State Solo and Ensemble Contest to be held in Austin on May 24th. All University High School students advanced in the Class One Vocal Solo category. Oh, I am so sorry. And tonight, our Community Partner Award is going to Whataburger. Whataburger is honored Whataburger is honored with the Tazby Stand Up for Public Education Award as the May Waco ISD Community Partner of the Month. Receiving the award, our field marketing partner Chad There you go, Clip Narra. They really set me up tonight. So, since August 2023, Whataburger has gone above and beyond to support our Waco ISD community. From back-to-school celebrations to honoring our educators on National Special Education Day, their commitment to recognizing the hard work happening on our campuses has been extraordinary. Through the Baylor Water Teacher Promotion, they've celebrated outstanding teachers, and during National Teacher Appreciation Week, they awarded 1,000 Whataburger Whatta Teacher Grants to help educators go even further for their students. But their support hasn't stopped there. From breakfast donations to energize our staff, to fun game day activities for Waco ISD at the Waco ISD Stadium, and plenty of Whataburger swag and coupons shared along the way, Whataburger has truly been a partner in celebrating and uplifting Waco ISD. Thank you.
Okay. It's always so great to honor so many students, and I think with that magnitude and number of students, it at times gets a little bit difficult to see who's here and who's not. So thank you so much for everyone bearing with us while we kind of figure things out. So, moving on to item number six, superintendent's report. Dr. Spicer, our most important 6A bus driver appreciation.
Yes. Okay, so last month, we did celebrate our bus drivers, and
Okay, so last month, we did celebrate our bus drivers, and I'm gonna read what I wrote, but I had the opportunity to be a monitor on a bus. Three-hour drive, and let me tell you, them kids gave me the business. But that's not in the script. So, this item is really just a chance for me to publicly, publicly just say thank you and share my appreciation for our Waco ISD transportation team. I had the opportunity to spend an afternoon in the Bus Barn Office, watching how our teams respond to campus call, support parents needing information, and provide logistical support to drivers out on the road. I also had the chance to ride two bus routes as a bus monitor, and let me tell you, they did put me to work. Like, I thought the monitor was gonna stay with me. No, she got on another bus. I was the monitor. Did not know that. I was kind of set up, but it's okay. As I've had the end-of-year meetings with staff and students, one of the glows that consistently comes up is how awesome our Transportation Services Team is now that they're part of Waco ISD, our team and our family. From me and the entire district, I wanted to say thank you and just share my appreciation publicly for all that you do. So, at this time, can we please just give them a round of applause so they know how much we appreciate them? Thank you guys so much. They are the first and the last to see our students, and that's just so important. So, I want to make sure that we make sure that they can see this and see that we do appreciate everything that they do. Graduation. Next week is time. We're looking forward to celebrating the Class of 2025. Waco High Ceremony will begin at 7:30 PM on Thursday, May 22nd, and University High School's graduation is scheduled for Friday at 7:30 PM. Both ceremonies are at, are at Waco ISD Stadium. We'll be enforcing a clearback policy, and attendees need to plan for time to walk through our security protocols before entering. This will include metal detectors. Board members, you're requested to arrive one hour prior to this event. We will provide food. Yes, please, one hour, please. Let's, huh, us? Yes, y'all. Summer School and other programs. Waco ISD will be hosting Summer School June 2nd through June 25th. Our elementary students will be hosted at four campuses in the district. Bells Hill, Dean Highland, J.H. Heinz, and Crestview. And our secondary students will be at Caesar Chavez Middle School, and all of our high school students will be at University High School. Additional special population programming and targeted reading programs are also planned through the month of July. Waco ISD has also partnered with Mentoring Alliance, YMCA, and other organizations through facility rentals to provide students and families in the community with opportunities for engaging in summer activities to keep our students learning this summer. Superintendent's Superhero Fun Run and Family Fest. Looking ahead to next school year, believe it or not, that starts July 1. We have set a date for our annual Back-to-School Family Fest for Saturday, July 26th, from 9:00 AM to 12:00 noon. I'm excited to share that this year, we will include our first Superintendent's Superhero Fun Run 5K for families and our community. Trustees, please join us. You do not have to run. Walk something, crawl something.
Come on out. Come on out. This is a challenge.
I'll drive the golf cart.
Okay, we'll take it. Thank you to Ms. Rhiannon Settles and Courtney Parnell for jumping in and bringing this idea to life. The run will be timed, and we'll be sending out information about the registration in June. University High School will again serve as the location for the single district-wide event. Students registered for Family Fest will receive a voucher for free clear backpacks with school supplies while supplies last, and we will again partner with Waco McLennan County Public Health District to provide all school-required immunizations and COVID vaccines for our students. And last but not least, Waco ISD Education Foundation Enrichment Grants. The Waco Education Foundation Surprise Patrol had a busy two days delivering checks for 34 teachers and grants to 50 recipients. This year, the foundation awarded $148,400, bringing the total amount of grants funded over the past decade and a half to over $2.45 million. Can we just give them a round of applause? Those are truly impressive numbers, and our thanks to the incredible generosity and support of the Waco ISD community and the hard work and dedication of the foundation's board and our Community Partnership Coordinator, Ms. Stephanie Heinz. I know she's here. She was here earlier. Thank you for leading this work for us. I can't wait to see these incredible learning experiences come to take shape and fruition next year. So, thank you for the people and the teachers who put in for the grants, and thank you for the students who get to benefit for this hard work. So, thank you so much to our foundation. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Spicer. All great stuff that's going on here. Yeah, and to the Education Foundation, I think $148,000 of grants is significant for our teachers, and all that money goes straight into classrooms, which I think is such needed, so needed for this time, because I know teachers kind of take out of their own pockets to make sure that their lessons and their curriculum and everything is engaging. So, thank you so much for that. Moving on to item number seven, Information Item and Reports. Trustee Bledsoe, do you have any questions on that? Item 7A or 7B? Okay, great. Mr. Trustee Davis, do you have any questions?
No.
Trustee Vedania?
No.
Trustee Guillory?
No.
Trustee Ochoa?
No.
Trustee Patton?
No, ma'am.
Okay, moving on to item number eight, Review, Discuss, and Take Appropriate Action on K-12 Math Resource Adoption and Purchase. For this item, we have moved it up because we have guests who are gonna, who are speaking teachers, and we don't want to keep them too terribly late. So, we've moved this item up. As the speakers are speaking, we're gonna let them go through the entire presentation. You have notepads on your, on your table right next to you. If you have any questions, if you would just please write it down there. I'm not looking at anybody. I'm looking at everybody. I'm not singling out anybody here. But if you have questions, if you would please just write them down, and then at the end, we'll go ahead and open up, open up the floor for discussion. Okay, Dr. Cornblum.
Hi. Good evening, Madam President, trustees, and Dr. Spicer. Okay, well, let's jump in. So, we are going to talk about our K-12 math resource adoption, and so what we're going to do is talk about it from the standpoint of the district process, the campus process, and then the resources, and also get some feedback from teachers as well. So, why this matters? So, really, I mean, looking at our math resources, you might have seen this in your memo, so I'll let you read kind of what's up on the screen, but this is important to us because it has been since 2014, since a math adoption has taken place here in Waco. Those run on a cycle with the state. The last math adoption was pushed by the state, and so this is the first time that they have come up again for adoption. So, we've adopted science curriculum last year, English curriculum 2020, and then I think it was 2019, also another part of that English curriculum, and then pre-K was bought in there as well. So, but 11 years since we've had a math adoption. So, the focus of this, when you're buying new curriculum resources, is really to focus on your Tier 1 instruction. So, looking at the resource that we can put in the hands of teachers to teach their lessons every day. So, things that we were considering when we approached this adoption really came from not only what we know, but also feedback received from teachers as well. So, obviously, which resources provided strong Tier 1 instruction without heavy modifications? That, you know, came a lot from, think about our reading, how folks have talked about a lot of having too many resources and different things like that. So, really, what, what can we put in their hands that won't have to be supplemented as much? Right now, with our current math curriculum, because it is a bit outdated, we have had to provide supplemental resources to plug holes because our teacs have changed, the test has changed, and so we've, we've plugged that way. So, we considered if the mass resource, or the resource supported students at mastering grade-level standards effectively, how well did the resource align to our instructional vision? So, we've been working on a math framework for the last two years that we want to continue with that framework, and so we wanted a resource that would fit inside of that framework. Did the resource provide support for teachers in both content knowledge and pedagogy? So, if I'm a new teacher, helping me understand not only what I'm teaching, but also how to deliver that instruction to my students as well. And then focus on selecting the best foundational resource for core instruction. So, you've seen this timeline before, and we've provided it, and so this started way back, actually, before March 17th. Late February, there was a symposium that happened at Region 12 where folks could come and look at all of the resources from different vendors. And so, we took a team of people from the Curriculum and Instruction Department, looked at different vendors that were there, and then invited vendors into the district to showcase their, their resources here in the boardroom, actually. And then we continued on to the process, campus level, or district level and campus level, and now here we are today. So, how did the district-level vetting process look? So, at the district level, we started with a group of our curriculum coordinators. Some instructional specialists were invited, principals were invited, instructional, or sorry, teacher leaders for various campuses. So, this wasn't inclusive of all principals, you know, this was kind of a smaller group of folks. There were more invited than, than actually showed up. And I have that on a sticky, and I forgot to bring those numbers with me. So, when my, my support system over here comes up and speaks, if we want that one, they can pull those numbers for us. So, what we did at this level is the vendors came and actually presented and talked to us about their resources more in-depth than what was at the, at the service center. And so, again, we were looking at the core structure of the components for each program, ensuring that things aligned. We've been talking about alignment, right, a lot, always when we talk about curriculum, not just with our state standards, but also with our priorities, and identifying any immediate concerns that would prevent a resource from moving forward. So, something that might have prevented a resource from moving forward might have been that it was approved for maybe K-2, but it wasn't approved for 3 through 5, or, you know, something along those lines. So, looking at, you know, different, different components like that. So, this rubric that you see in front of you is, this was actually produced by the State Board of Education, the rubric that they used when they were vetting things. So, we condensed it a bit and brought it into the district, and so this is the rubric that we used after each presentation to rate the resources. And so, they were individually rated by each member, and then those ratings were compiled to see which ones were viable to move forward. So, it was on a rating scale of 1 to 4 for each of those components. I do want to go back just a sec. It's hard to see if there, but that first one is the instructional design. Thank you. The reason I wanted to really draw in on that one, they're all important, but that one especially, because that's where we were looking for that clear scope and sequence, looking for unit support. So, if you remember in reading after our board workshop that evening, how we left with the charge of creating those unit maps, and so we wanted something that already had that built in, and then also the lesson plan support. So, because that's something that we had heard a lot from teachers. So, I just wanted to draw attention to that one. So, that was a, an area that was looked upon heavily. So, once all, all resources were rated and all comments were discussed, we compiled all of that and came up with the things that were in support of a resource or some of the things that eliminated some of our resources. So, factors that supported a resource to move forward was looking at if it had strong alignment with standards, clear and structured lesson design that supports Tier 1 instruction, high-quality print and digital resources for teachers and students. It needed a English and Spanish version support for elementary, and I'll talk about that a little bit more here in a little bit. Embedded supports for conceptual understanding and problem solving, so those supports to push our kids to higher-level thinking, and then a user-friendly platform. And that's also something that we heard when we were talking about some of our current resources, is that, you know, teachers might be clicking and doing different things like that, and for some teachers, that was maybe problematic. Challenges that could have led to elimination was, or were, that they required significant supplementation. So, it was a resource, but it didn't fully meet all the criteria, so we were still going to have to supplement. Or, as I said a minute ago, that maybe it wasn't fully approved. Parts were approved, but not all were approved. Weak or inconsistent alignment with best practices in math, limited teacher supports for content knowledge and pedagogy, complex or non-intuitive digital platform, so just hard to maneuver, lack of balance between procedural fluency and conceptual. So, could have been too procedural, right? It didn't push our students to where they needed to be, and then Spanish translation was not effective. So, that's where I want to talk about, talk about that for a sec. So, when we were over here, the following resources were initially considered. So, Agile Mind for 6 through 12, Great Minds, which is the, the partner with the Blue Bonnet on the elementary side, and then Carnegie, which is the partner for the Blue Bonnet Texas resource on the secondary side. iReady Classroom Mathematics, this is a K through 8, and then Kid 'em. You know that we've heard a lot about iReady. We have iReady testing. We have iReady intervention. Some people have a love-hate relationship with iReady. So, I bring that up because as we were reviewing that resource, one of the things that came up from actually Mrs. Benson, who's our Director of our English Learners Department, is in the Spanish version, she was noticing that, the translation in the, the Spanish, like, student book, some of the things were actually at a lower level than what the English version was. And she said, you know, and I wouldn't have known that necessarily, that it didn't push the students to where they needed to go, and then also it wasn't fully approved in all areas. So, considered, then, after we looked at all of the comments and the viable resources, so for elementary, Great Minds, and I, I focus on the Great Minds piece because Great Minds is a company that partnered with Texas to make the Blue Bonnet portion. Great Minds is a company all on its own, and so as we're looking at it for this, we are looking at the Blue Bonnet supports, but buying, or, you know, adopting the whole Blue Bonnet, or not Blue Bonnet, but Great Minds platform. So, we're looking at the whole program versus that slice, because you can just look at that little piece. And then Kid 'em Texas Math, also a viable resource. And then secondary, Agile Mind, and then also, you may have heard of Carnegie before. Carnegie has been around for a while. So, if this, you know, were something that goes forward, we're looking at buying the whole Carnegie platform and their piece with the, you know, the Blue Bonnet student additions. So, how did that rating at the district level come out? So, Agile Mind, there were 20, everybody could earn 24 points, and so we had 18 and a half out of 24 for Agile Mind. Carnegie Blue Bonnet, 21 of 24. Great Minds, 21 of 24. iReady, 15 and a half of 24, and Kid 'em Texas, 16 and a half out of 24. So, the resources that went forward to campus committees were Agile Mind and Carnegie for the secondary resource, and then Great Minds and Kid 'em for the elementary resource. So, at the campus-level vetting, this is how the process went, and I'm going to invite the teachers up here in a little bit to talk about this a little bit more, because they're the ones that experienced that on their campus. So, the role of that was to gather feedback from teachers. So, the expectation is that all teachers who teach math got to give input on this. And so, ensure materials, they were looking at, are they in line with their instructional needs? They were able to look at the materials, use them, and explore them, reviewed textbooks, digital platforms, lesson plans, and explored sample lesson activities. So, there was a training at the district level for campus reps who then took the process back to their campus and helped lead the process on their campus, along with their administrators. So, their responsibilities were to help review and evaluate the resources on their campus. They used the provided rubrics, the same ones that we used at the district level back on campus, and they were given guidelines for that for consistency. They documented feedback that came from their committees, so that when we got the feedback back, we could look at people, you know, what folks thought were strengths and what folks thought were areas for growth. There were scheduled campus and level review sessions. They supported, the reps supported their teachers in engaging with the materials, and then submitted feedback by the designated date to the district-level facilitators. So, as you see, they were given the exact same rubric, but there was a part added. They were asked to give overall comments about each resource, any questions that they had about each resource, and any concerns that they had about each resource. I sent out, actually to all of Waco ISD, so not just the math teachers, but to everyone in Waco, they received this digital login information. So, the digital demo accounts provided hands-on access to explore instructional materials more in-depth at another, another level. And then they were also, so on the rubric, let me go back for just a second. On this rubric, the camp, the campus reps were trained on what this was, but our campus-level coordinators also designed a look-for sheet to really go more in-depth with each of those categories, so that they, if they were like, well, what does this mean exactly? They have a look-for page that they could use to help them reference. So, do you want to open that just a second? Can you make it just a little bigger? So I won't read all of these, but it just, I just wanted you to get a clearer picture of like what, when we say look fours, what did that mean within each category and how it described those things? So when we were talking about intentional design, so clear course level scope and sequence, pacing guidelines. So you know, did it have a suggested pacing, the rationale for the unit? Did it describe what this is about? Unit and lesson internalization protocols. So if we are looking at having our teachers not spend as much time lesson planning, is there a process built into the resource that helps them go through the lesson that they're going to teach to internalize what they're going to then turn around in their classroom? So these these areas provided more specific look fours within each category for them to consider if they were like, hmm, I'm not sure what that means. Okay, thank you, Mr. Allen. And then, so that all went out, I believe that was on the third. And then on the fourth, there was up on our curriculum floor, our curriculum coordinators had kind of a reception, a come and go where folks could also come here and look at other samples that were here and ask specific questions about them if they had other questions, other, you know, maybe their campus rep, you know, maybe didn't have the answer, or they just wanted to come and ask specific questions of our coordinators. So that was here, that was come and go. I think we said we had what, 45? About 46 for elementary, do you remember? About 25 for secondary who came.
Is that teachers or?
So so I am now going to invite our teachers up just to talk to you about their process on campus and, you know, as they were vetting and how that process went for them. So we have Anna McNair from Parkdale Elementary, Christina Munoz from Kendrick, Stephanie Marsteller from GW Carver, and Melton Holcomb from University High School.
Hi, good evening. So I'm Christina Munoz from Kendrick Elementary, and I was the campus rep. So I just wanted to kind of give you like a little sneak peek of what it was like on our campus when we were doing this process. And so like Dr. Corn Bloom said, she sent out the digital platforms for us to get access to. And my principal Isabel Lozano sent that out as like our pre-work. So we, teachers got to like, I don't know, for lack of a better word, like play around with the platforms to see, kind of get an idea of what both resources had to offer. And then after speaking with Ms. McNair, we had a very similar process on the campus. So on the campus level, what we did is we all met in the library, all the teachers, and we kind of grounded ourselves back with those core beliefs for, and just kind of aligned ourselves to what the expectations were from a good resource. And then I went through the the rubric to kind of clarify anything that was needed as well. And we had the look for page that made it very easy for us to follow. And then we sat in like grade level, oh, I'm sorry, grade level, yeah, small groups. And you might see, so like a group of second grade teachers looking through Kid 'em, for example. We had the physical resources, we had some samples, and then we also had some teachers, every teacher, every group had like a laptop with the platform open and available while we were going through the rubric. So every grade level was responsible for going through each one individually. So we sat, you might see like a group of fourth grade teachers looking through, you know, the Blue Bonnet curriculum and seeing what they had as far as, you know, the digital platforms, what was available and those physical resources as well. And then we went through those look fours and we really were just, I mean, the teachers were very meticulous and on those look fours, like even giving like text evidence where they found, hey, look, this is where I found that it was supporting collaboration. And we really were, like I said, just very like thorough going through the things. And then Ms. McNair, she's going to speak to some things that she did special at her campus as well.
So our campus did the same thing pretty much. We met in the library, K through five math teachers got together and we talked about all of the components. We looked at Kid 'em, we looked at Great Minds. And we we did basically the same thing she did where we sat and we wrote out what we thought were the strengths and weaknesses and, you know, pieces that might be missing or if we had questions. In addition, I brought it back to my class and I passed out some of the workbooks and I let the kids look through it. And they were able to give me feedback on what they liked and what they didn't like. So that was interesting just to get it from a kid's perspective as well.
At university, our process was very similar. So I took the paper materials back after the district training and then I distributed them to the different PLCs so that teachers could independently look through them and then we could get together in our PLCs kind of as our own specialties. And then we did come together as a department later on. And I sent out the rubric that you guys saw back in, I believe, the first week of April sometime, so they knew exactly what to look for when they were looking through all the resources. And we met just kind of informally off and on to say, oh, did you see in this? And if someone hadn't taught or had taught something before, you know, do you like this, that and the other things? So we had some informal and some more.
All right. And at Carver, our process was slightly different. We did not have any PLCs planned during this time. And so we gave the online resources out to all of our teachers. And then after we had met as reps for the campus, I was able to bring the hard copy books back. And so each grade level received the appropriate book for their grade level. And each teacher received a copy of the rubric. And then they had about a week to go through resources, fill out the rubric, and then I met with each of them to make sure I understood where their concerns and questions were and what they liked about it, and then just averaged out those rubrics to submit for our campus.
All right, thank you all. So when when that scoring came back after that process happened, this was due back to the district, I think on April 23rd.
Fifth?
Twenty fifth. So it came back on the 25th and the scores were tabulated. And so where you see the campuses, the green means that that campus scored a higher for, you know, whichever one, so Great Minds or or Kid 'em. The area where you see that they have two, so Dean Highland is the only one that had two, that campus was split. So half of the campus liked one resource and half of the campus liked the other. And so at the elementary level, eleven and a half of our campuses sent back feedback that they preferred Great Minds over Kid 'em. And that left three and a half campuses that preferred Kid 'em. So this is a generalization, the numbers that I'm getting ready to give you, because obviously you know on a campus, when the generalization is, if we're saying that a campus voted more heavily for the resource, then we average those teachers into the the yes column, right? I mean, the eleven and a half, that that's the actual, but here's a generalization. So for Great Minds Blue Bonnet, out of 280 teachers, math teachers, there were 218. So eleven and a half campuses, that would be 218 math teachers or 78% of math teachers felt that the Great Minds Blue Bonnet resource was more appropriate for them to deliver lessons, to teach their children and to get them to where they needed to be. And 62 out of 280, which was 22%, felt that Kid 'em was the resource that they would have preferred. At the high school level, well, let's let's pause here. I'm going to actually invite our elementary guys back because I want them to talk to you because I could look at the resources all day from my standpoint, but I'm not the one in the classroom using it, right? So I'm going to invite our elementary teachers back up. And so they're going to share with you a little bit about what they thought their strengths and areas of growth were for Great Minds and then same for Kid 'em.
You can read the strengths and weaknesses. I just wanted to share that personally, what I really liked is that this particular book uses CRA. It's a way of teaching math that there's a lot of research behind it. There's training at Region 12, and it uses concrete items first, and then it goes into using those items to create a picture. And in that picture, you can use tallies or you can use dots, and then it goes into building the equation. And this is a very fluid system so that if somebody is having trouble understanding the abstractness of an equation, you can always move them back to concrete or to the pictorial model. So at any point in time, my kids are using this, this is research that that has been done. And so I have, I've been using this, but it's not streamlined in the way that it is in Blue Bonnet. Because our envision is outdated, I've been using about seven or eight different resources to plug and create the lesson plan that our district uses, the framework that it uses. So because it is aligned to our framework, because it uses CRA, I I really enjoyed looking through all of the material. In addition, it had a bilingual component. More and more bilingual students are coming into my classroom. I've enjoyed working with three this year that came in only speaking Spanish. They were my greatest, they achieved the greatest growth in my class. One girl grew 293%. And so I was really happy, but it was a struggle. We had iPads with Google Translate and there is no Spanish book or there's no book for the ESL. And so this particular program had, it has little side notes for some of the students who are a little further along, but it also has Spanish book that I was very happy to to see because we use that Google Translate to mixed reviews. So I don't know if you.
Vanilla.
Go on.
For Kid 'em. Yeah. Okay. And like Ms. McNair, you can see the strengths and areas of growth for Kid 'em as well. But honestly, what it it came down to the numbers when you're looking at these of these programs. I mean, this, I'll start my 18th year next year and you just, you learn that no resource is perfect, obviously, there's just, there's always going to be something that, that's why there's areas of growth for both for both programs. But what it came down to is it's just the numbers. We went through the things and it wasn't like Kid 'em was like, oh, this is a horrible resource, let's walk out, you know? We're not grandstanding against it. It was just that when you're putting these two side by side, like you can't argue with the fact that these had just better things or it just had more of the things that we needed. Thus, the numbers that you saw, you know, on those rubrics, 21 out of 24, I think versus like 16. And so we, no bias toward it, we just sat, looked at it, and and that's why I I agree with everything she said with the the Blue Bonnet, that it just meets our needs a little bit better.
You'll have time at the end if you want to ask them more specific questions about the resources in general because these will be your guys, as will our coordinators, be over me. Okay. At the secondary level, we were looking at Carnegie and Agile Mine, obviously fewer secondary campuses. So on that one, we had four of our six campuses felt that Carnegie was the resource that they would rather have, and two of our campuses went for Agile Mine. So now I'm going to invite the secondary teachers back up to talk about those resources.
Hello again. All right, I'm going to talk to you all a little bit about Carnegie. As everybody else has already said, you can read the screen, but I'm just going to point out a few of the strengths that were really important to me and my colleagues. We really appreciate it, the TEAC's alignment and the pacing guides and lessons that were already provided in this resource. And then one really big one was the vertical alignment. It vertically aligns K through 12. And so if we selected this resource, it'd be a lot easier easier for us in terms of vocabulary and things, the knowledge that kids are already coming to us with at a higher level because we can use that same vocabulary and and align it a lot easier for them.
The Agile Minds, the strengths that we found or that we discussed were the questioning. It is heavy on the conceptual, less on just procedural. It did have a lot of suggested questions for teachers to ask and to kind of lead student thinking. And then some of the, or a big area of growth especially that I found is when we're getting a new resource, we want to make, well, might be selfish, I want to make my job easier. And the Agile Mine just didn't really have a lesson plan. It had a list of questions to ask, but we would still be making our own resources, pretty much, coming up with our own materials. So that was a big area of concern for me, not that it had bad ideas, just that we would have to fill a lot of gaps.
So because of all of those reasons and just really taking into consideration the feedback that was sent back to us, because as I said before, both resources at both levels that were put out were considered viable resources, right? We went through that that vetting here and wouldn't have put those out to be looked at if not. And so really, the decision came down to what came back from campuses. And so for elementary, and the feedback came back, as you already saw, the Great Minds Blue Bonnet resource and then the Carnegie Learning Blue Bonnet resource. So this this is just next, that if, you know, if we were to go in this direction, I wanted everyone to see that we've developed a professional development plan, starting in June with administrators and then phasing on through. There's some optional training for teachers over the summer, if they were able to come over the summer. What that would mean for them is that when they came back to school, that they would get one of their days back, but if they came to the training over the summer. So they would have more time in their classroom. And then fall training, that says to be determined because it's going to be based on need, right? So once we see implementation, what what are we seeing out there that they need more support with? So for those district professional development days, those topics will be decided based on what we see by our presence on campus. But then both companies have developed a professional development plan to where they'll come and also provide onsite coaching in the fall and spring to help us look at implementation as well. So looking at our our year, that's how the professional development, because I know we've talked about before, anytime you're rolling something out, whatever it is, you need a strong PD plan and a strong support plan so that that learns or that rolls out well. And this, you know, it is kind of switching the way we look at things, so kind of moving from your teacher planning that lesson to sort of the lesson being there and then going through this internalization process, which is a different process. So now I'm going to open it up for questions. And I'm just going to go ahead and ask you all to come back up because I think. Is there any questions? If you'd like for us to go back to any slides, just.
Perfect, yeah, great.
Just before we really start with the questions, can you explain a little bit about House Bill 1605 and what is meant by high quality instructional materials?
I'll also ask the coordinators if they want to explain a little bit more too. So the new process, so going back, we used to adopt resources on a proclamation process. And so the state developed because of this, a process that we called IMRA. You'll hear it referred to as EMRA, which is Instructional Materials Review Adoption. And so they have come up with criteria that identifies high quality instructional materials according to them. And so as they are vetting all of these materials, the materials have to meet that those standards that they've outlined. Another thing in HB 1605 is, not that teachers can't lesson plan, but it's looking at the time spent on that and the amount of time that we can ask teachers to spend on that. And so they put in there that, I forget how it's worded, but it, so much time cannot be spent on actual planning of lessons versus internalization of lessons. And so that all came out of that bill.
So, I mean, I'm just going to keep asking.
Yep, that's great.
So this is kind of new to me, I apologize. The curriculum, based on on what their definition of high quality instructional materials is, would you say the current, our current math curriculum, would you consider that high quality? Any progress monitoring?
The difference between a curriculum and a resource, so we're calling this curriculum, right? Because we would be, we would be using this resource. The curriculum that we've been talking about now for years is the curriculum that we've written, right? The units, similar to what you all saw at the board workshop for reading, and I'm sorry, Mr. Bloodsoe, you weren't there, but they're, the units that we build, right? Those units, yes. It's the resource that's attached to the units. So what I call our curriculum currently is, are those documents similar to the ones that you have in reading? And then the, the resources embedded in there and it's how we teach it. Because that resource was adopted in 2014, that's where the snag is. We, keeping that document, you know, that's okay, but no matter what, we need a new resource because that one is just time. I mean, it's been 11 years. So it's the resource within that document that's not working, no.
So as a teacher, from a teacher's perspective, when I go to lesson plan, I go to those curriculum documents that have been created and everything's there that I need. Everything's aligned to what we're supposed to teach for the TEACs, right? It's all there. But when it's time for me to do that, now I go to my Envision resource and then that's where the holes are. My actual resource, so the state of Texas says, I need to teach this and I have all these things and that's where I find that on that curriculum document. But then when I go to actually teach it in front of my class, well, this is the resource I have and it's just not meeting those needs because sometimes it's like common core and so some of those things aren't aligned and that's where the misstep is. So I'm like, okay, I need to teach fractions to second graders. Here, here I'm supposed to teach halves, fourths and eighths. And then I go to my resource and my resource is off, you know, it's gone off the rails and it's teaching all kinds of things that the state of Texas says, you know, this is what your focus is. So when I'm looking at this, then okay, Envision doesn't meet my needs. Now I have to spend more time, okay, let's find stuff, let's create. Oh, we're creating all the time. Teachers are spending hours creating things to meet exactly what is under that alignment.
How long has it been that way for you?
I mean, 18 years to, what, 14? That we've had Envision? 11? Okay, 11.
You've had holes in your lessons. Why haven't we provided you with any support?
Just, well, we have support, so there are supports under there. But again, if we're looking at just wanting a resource, the resource, we want it more all inclusive. So what we have right now just doesn't meet that. So we do have other things that, we have engaging mathematics. The problem is, is that they're finding other resources to fill those gaps. They do that for us. However, now instead of just going to one place, now I have four or five places that, so okay, I'm going to this book for this and this one for this. And then that's where it kind of becomes that kind of jumbled mess. And so we're hoping to find something that has everything, you know, more of what we need all at once.
Before you step away, ma'am, what grade do you teach?
Currently second grade.
Have you ever taught from a scripted program?
Yes, sir.
Do you find that that is, because I've looked at both of these programs for elementary and one of those is highly, highly scripted. Teacher, you say this. Students, you say this. Teacher, you say this. I thumb through that. As a former math teacher, I would be so bored, out of my mind, teaching from a program that is so highly scripted. And I think with my boredom from an educator standpoint, therefore I would not be able to engage my students as, I'm sorry, I've got candy in my mouth, as successfully as if I was following this rigidly, I would say scripted program that is found within Bluebonnet.
Okay. So what I think you're speaking to is the difference in the science of teaching and the art of teaching. And so you're, what I feel like you're coming from like years of experience. So that would be where, if I'm a brand new baby teacher, I don't have the art of teaching down yet. I need that script to help me through because I don't even know what I don't know. But as a veteran or a seasoned teacher, that's your art of teaching, that you're going to make that come alive in the classroom. So yes, you have a script, there, no one's telling us that we have to follow you this. It's not robotic, it's not meant to be that, but it's supposed to be that support for, I'm also a coach. I coach teachers who are, you know, some that aren't even certified yet, that are working on their certification currently. And so for them to see that planned out, but that's where we support each other in our PLCs and we do practice teaches and we come together so that if you're bored to tears doing it, well, guess what, Mr. Davis, he's over here, he's going to model the lesson. This is how I'm going to turn it around, you know? Then we, Mr. Ochoa is going to come over here and this is how I would teach it and use the script as a guide, not necessarily as like a hard and fast, this is what I have to do.
Do you mind if I, if I chime in? When I did look at those scripted pieces, I thought there's no way the student is going to say what is on there. And I did talk to Ms. Sanders a little bit about it. And so I just felt like, as I read through the whole script though, it was a great way to remember where misconceptions happen and what misconceptions might be going on. As a seasoned teacher, I already know where they're going to stumble, but it's better to plan out how you're going to handle those misconceptions. And so to me, I just read it, new teachers can go ahead and try and use some of those questions in order to get at some of those misconceptions. But for me, it was just a great way to remember, what am I teaching? What kind of content am I trying to get through this, you know, out of this lesson? And where might misconceptions be happening? And you can see that as they are going through those questions, they are specifically targeting misconceptions. So I just saw it as a, as a way to internalize the lesson plan.
Madam President.
Yes, Mr. Davis.
Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead. No, go ahead.
I just, we were talking about that at one point and something for me was, as a seasoned teacher, like having the questions and the misconceptions there, like they have all said, it helps those newer teachers who aren't quite sure where the misconceptions are or what kinds of questions to ask, because that is something that we're often asked, like in our lesson plans, have you pre-thought your questions, right? So this gives us a starting point. But additionally, I think that I might think something is a misconception and this helps us see what other areas are misconceptions or maybe why it's a misconception in a way that I may not have thought of, so.
I appreciate all the work you guys did on this. I think my question is, what are we planning to do to make sure it's not another 11 years and we're suffering for long periods? What are we doing to regularly review this and pivot when we need to?
So, so with the current adoption, it, well, it was 11 years, so I've been here six. So right, it was here predated me. And so as they said, we were reviewing and getting the supplemental things to plug, but as you'll see, a math resource adoption is pretty expensive, right? And so it's not something that you can just, you know. So the thing with these, the way they're doing, to your point about the high quality materials and the IMRA process, they're doing them now more on a yearly so that if you get into something that doesn't pan out, that it is a little bit easier to pivot out of it. Though, with that said, you would have to start training and all of that other stuff over again. I think that's why, or not why, we would have gone through, we have a textbook adoption process no matter what, but this one was really diligent because we wanted to get it right. And so I think that's just listening, right, to what they're saying. And so as they said, you, you know, they were telling us where things were missing and we were buying things to plug those, but it's just like with reading, you know, having to go to more than one place. And so that just makes things more time consuming for them.
Yes, Mr. Bloodsoe.
Is there any data that you can give me that says, hey, school district X went to these curriculums and test scores went from A to B?
Yes. So I'm going to let the coordinators talk about that because we ask our vendors to tell us the districts so that they could, you know, give us the data. And so they did that, so I'll let them share that.
Hi. Okay, so I have, I'm sorry, I'm Tiffany Flores, I'm the secondary math coordinator. And I got to speak with two school districts. The first one, well, the first one, so both of them did MAP testing and so this is current right now, so this year. Because this, the district I'm about to tell you now, they just started it. So if you were to look at the taper, you can't really tell because they just started it because this will be their first year taking STAR. But as far as their MAP testing, out of 500 students, 340 students met growth. So 68% of their students grew.
What district was that?
Conley ISD.
When you talk about, I'm sorry, Ms. Flores, when you talk about growth, what does that mean?
Their growth goals.
So meaning they're at target or what, what does that mean?
It was on MAP, so I'm not sure exactly how it targets, but.
So we don't know what the kind of breadth of that.
Right. She just told me out of 500, 340 met growth.
How long have they been using it?
This was, they started this, this was their first year using it.
So they don't have their STAR data yet?
Yeah.
To show them.
Okay, okay. So just growth. Okay, great. Thank you. Sorry, didn't mean to interrupt you.
Oh, no, it's okay. The second district is East Central High. They said that, and this is for teachers, for their MAP test, that 60%, I mean, 40% exceeded student growth, 40% of teachers exceeded their growth for their students. And so that means that 60% or more met growth for their students. And that was for teachers.
What was the district?
East Central High and it's, is it East Central ISD or East? Yeah, it's San Antonio. That district, I went and pulled taper reports on them because that's a, you know, the number that they gave, I just wanted to see because that's their STAR scores, they've been using it a little bit longer. And so what I would say about them is they had incremental growth. It, I mean, to be honest, it wasn't like you were going to see like 20 percentage points, you know, but they had incremental growth. But overall, just kind of on average, they were at least 10 percentage points higher in most areas than what we're scoring right now. Their demographic's a little bit different than ours, but they could have been a little higher anyway, right? But I mean, based on where their, their scores already were. But I looked from, it was 2022 through and it was kind of steady incremental gains with them.
How long had they used that program, Dr. Cornblum?
I think they said four years.
East Central? Did you, Dr. Cornblum or Ms. Flores, did you find data from Temple ISD as I had asked?
I did. I did look at Temple. Temple, it was almost identical to theirs. They're incremental, not, I mean, nothing that was just like, you know, they're higher, sitting higher than us, just like East Central was to begin with. And so, but they're not going backwards. And so it's, you know, like I said, incremental gains.
Do you happen to know what Temple was using before they went?
I don't know what before, but they went, they actually have the other version. So they're using, is it Eureka?
Eureka.
Eureka. So when it first came out, before it switched to Great Minds and this Bluebonnet version, they started with Eureka.
So they've used it for what, two years then? Because Eureka switched over, didn't it? This past year?
I think it may have been three for them.
Okay.
Because they, they jumped on right, I mean, early when it came out. I mean, they, they were some of the first around here to move that direction.
Is our, is our current program that we're using, it is state approved, correct?
It is.
Is it fall within NCTM lines?
National Math Standards.
It's not, they don't, it's not like aligned to those standards.
Are either of these programs, Kid 'em or Bluebonnet, aligned to NCTM standards?
Yes.
Both are?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to take a moment and thank Ms. McNair, Ms. Minios, Ms. Marstella and Mr. Holcomb for being here. I appreciate you speaking and I know you guys have a wealth of experience. I also wanted to thank you, Dr. Cornblum, for putting very, both the strengths and the areas of growth. I think those were very significant for being transparent in that. That was, it's very clear that you're kind of just laying it all out for the board to see. And so I really do appreciate you doing that. The, as I look through here, I have in, over my years, started to look for subtleties and noticed that small subtleties that start from the top actually grow and kind of create either a bigger impact or bigger chasm, as they kind of trickle down through the schools, into the schools. You know, I, I, when I see the Bluebonnet curriculum specifically for the elementary and I see few areas of growth through ready to go stations, limited small group and extension activities, engagement strategy of limited but not enough opportunities for creative exploration, many TEACs packed in short modules, heavy workbook reliance, number of students, maybe work, workbooks for young kids may be overwhelming, not enough built in student exploration, student voice and choice is limited. I really do, I appreciate you writing that there. And that to me, gives me a little bit of a pause because, I'll let you address it. It just gives me a little bit of a pause because I know that a lot of our, you know, little elementary kids are, they go from concrete to abstract and it usually isn't until third, fourth, fifth grade that they're starting to get into more of the abstract. And that huge, really, really strong concrete foundation is imperative for number sense later on. And so when I look, I'm looking at this again through kind of a teaching eye. And so when I look for Kid 'em and I see strong digital platform with real time data tools, I'm like, whatever that is, I want it. Because that, it means flexibility within the classroom, it ensures real time data, you can do interventions a lot quicker. And that is what you need when you are teaching elementary. And I would assume, I've never taught secondary, but I would assume secondary, you need that quick feedback for interventions and moving kids around and grouping. And so those, those really kind of give me a little bit of a pause to be like hip, hip, hooray. But I will let you address those.
Actually, I want Ms. Sanders to address. So specifically when you're talking about the intervention and those parts, there is another part to the Great Minds platform that we didn't receive in our materials because it's being developed, I think. So I want her to talk a little bit about that because we'll get that, but it wasn't in the review. And I know less about that than Ms. Sanders does, so I want her to speak to that.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Sanders.
Good evening. Okay, so when it comes to, I know like as far as like workbooks, heavy workbooks, so at the time when teachers got to review these resources, they did not have access to Great Minds digital platform because that is a piece that we have to purchase. And so it wasn't like open for teachers to kind of get in and play with. So all they had was the palette, which had the PDFs of like the teacher editions, student editions, and then they also had the hard copies. The only thing that they could see is kind of like a video of what the digital platform could offer. And so within that digital platform, yes, they have the option to use the student workbooks, but through the digital platform, they can be able to assign those same assignments to students. So it's not all workbooks. They will have access to technology and all of those things. When it comes to small groups, so how the resource is structured, it allows for like 60 minute, our math block allows for 90 minutes. And so they also have in addition to that called catalysts. And with catalysts, that's where teachers will be able to kind of supplement with many lessons that they can use at the teacher table. It also has a practice and application activities where students can do during learning stations while the teacher is pulling small group. They also have a succeed book, which is kind of like a workbook where like, they say like homework problems, but teachers also could utilize that for a small group as well. We also have I-R-E-D, already, which we use for small group instruction, but catalyst is going to be a plus because those activities are actually going to be aligned to what they are teaching for that day.
The, thank you so much, Ms. Sanders, I appreciate that. I, I think the, I appreciate technology and I think it has its place in the classroom and can be utilized to really capture imaginations and capture kind of creative. and can be utilized to really capture imaginations and capture kind of creative, um, uh, we, can help, um, in the learning process. I think, um, when I see, I mean, I, I, I hear you, when you say, you know, something is scripted, you know, we've got this digital thing that's going to be developed, we haven't really seen it yet, it kind of makes me pause a little bit.
We just don't have access to.
You don't, which, which also, yeah, which also kind of makes me pause a little bit. And, and it's mainly just because it's like, oh, here's this nice car, yeah, I'm not going to let you test drive it, but here it is, kind of thing. So that's, that's my only pause, not with you guys, but maybe with the company itself saying, hey, you should have probably let us see this and given access. Again, not with you all.
And I did do my due diligence.
Yes.
Like.
Try to get it.
It was just within the timeframe, I wasn't able to.
And.
But, yeah.
It is very evident through the rubric and all that, you guys have done a fantastic job at setting this up, so I want you to hear that. You've done a great job setting this up, but it's more of, these are, these are just questions, and it, it's not a knock on you all, it's more a knock on the company and really trying to see what is going to meet the needs of our students. And I understand, um, you know, the, um, you, you, we, we, can I ask another question kind of totally unrelated to this?
Yes, and also, because there, you said, you mentioned about like student choice and that kind of thing, and I didn't get to talk about that. But the structure of how the lessons flow, um, there is a cons, like an application problem. And so that kind of provides opportunities for students to choose how they're going to solve. They can choose the strategy, they can choose, um, the type of model that they want to use. So that kind of honors student's choice there. And then also, when you go into application practice, that is where tier, uh, the concept development, sorry, that's where the core instruction is coming in for the day. And so you, it's kind of outlined with a must-do, should-do, could-do framework. And so with that, um, teachers have autonomy, okay, so like, I would say a must-do is going to be your exit ticket because that's aligned to like the lesson and how students are going to show mastery. But then you have your, um, should-do, which is going to be like additional practice and reinforcement. And then your could-do is for those babies that already have it, and, um, they just kind of need more complex thinking and extension. And so that also honors student choice as well.
Okay, so the, you're telling me some of the differentiation that we're looking for is in.
Yeah, I can speak to every component throughout, from fluency down to student debrief, and then also CRA is heavily embedded in each lesson. And so if I have a lesson that calls for more abstract as a teacher, then I can differentiate and provide students with manipulatives, or I could have them draw me a picture. And so there's multiple ways that teachers can differentiate throughout.
And if I'm not mistaken, that's correct in both programs? The differentiation offered, yes, ma'am?
Yes, yes.
I'm, Stephanie, did you, did I cut you off? I'm so sorry.
Sorry, I just have two questions because I'm trying to get it, uh, I'm trying to get my mind kind of around it. Tier one about, what is tier one instruction? I know, I think I know what it is, but I want to hear it.
Your first teach, what's going to get us there the first time? And I have to supplement with different resources? So it's aligned to grade level?
So we're not, this is not our intervention tiers that we're doing? Tier one, students, tier two, tier three?
Tier one is like your first teach, core instruction, and then when I need to scaffold, then that's where I'm going into tier two, tier three.
When you're doing that, okay. Okay, so, so when you say tier, you mean just a direct teach?
Yeah, yes.
Everyone, whole class?
Yes, ma'am.
Got you, thank you. I was getting confused with the tier, I'm thinking of interventions, and then we have behavior tiers, and there's lots of tiers around here. And then the second question I had maybe for Dr. Spicer, and then we'll go to Mr. Bledsoe and, uh, Mr. Button. Uh, Dr. Spicer, approximately how many first-year teachers do we have in our district?
I have no idea.
Thank you. How many? No, sorry.
First year.
First year teachers.
That's HR. Do you know, Dr. Carradine, about how many first year, even a percentage, if it's not a rough number?
About 30%, 20%?
First year?
22.
There you go.
Okay, so it's.
And when you say that, I just want to say, like, just looking at this resource, I always try to keep it centered, what's going to give us the best of both worlds? We have campuses that have had vacancies all school year. You might have a long-term sub, or you might have someone that's coming in and out. Um, but then you also have your veteran teachers. So what resource is going to meet the needs of both and provide an equitable opportunity for all of our students?
Thank you.
I have, uh, two questions, kind of as it relates to buy-in. As a parent, did y'all give any consideration, uh, to allowing parents to speak into this?
We actually have, um, we had someone on the committee that is a parent. Um, his kid actually goes to Hillcrest Elementary. Um, so he was a part of all of our meetings. Um, but then also, some of our teacher leaders have kids in the district as well.
Was, was there any consideration to providing like an open forum for parents to come and view the material, to speak into it? No, okay. And then secondly, um, there are schools that, that obviously did not like Blue Bonnet. What would you tell them? What did they miss? What are they missing?
I have spoke to a couple of districts that, um, as far as not liking it or it not going well, it's the districts that are not doing it with 100% fidelity.
I guess, I mean specifically like schools in Waco High, like schools that reviewed this material did not like it. Like, what, what, what are they missing? Waco High, Hillcrest. And was there any consideration to like bringing people from there to speak on what they didn't like?
Trying to think, because the strengths and we, the pros and cons for both, but I think, um, I think what really drove, I don't know, you could probably speak on.
I think what trustee Bledsoe is trying to get at is, we've heard from teachers who support this one selection, but we know that Hillcrest, Lake Air, Dean Highland, uh, Providence Heights, Half of Dean Highland, uh, Tennessean, and Waco High do not, did not vote for this curriculum. We've heard from, uh, Mr. Holcomb, we've heard from you guys who supported one program over the other. We didn't, we've not heard from those schools who chose not to, to select it that way.
And before they answer, I'll answer that. Usually what happens is we say, we do our homework as a system, so district level, campus level, or everyone, we will bring you a recommendation. And so tonight, we're bringing you the recommendation. So since this was the recommendation from our entire district, that's the only one you're going to be hearing about tonight because that's the recommendation from administration to the board. And so that's why you're hearing from us about this particular set of curriculums for elementary and secondary.
I'm well aware of that.
Yes, sir.
And my, not to be, not to be dismissive, but when we're being asked to select a curriculum, we, we are making this choice and we want to be able to hear both sides. Uh, and knowing that, looking at the rubric, and knowing that one high school out of our two high schools did not vote for a curriculum that we will be sitting here in a few minutes and casting a vote for greatly concerns me. So therefore, I would want to hear from those other folks, why, why did they not go with, uh, Carnegie Blue Bonnet? And why did some do it? We're hearing from the people who said yes. But I'm also wanting to make a good vote, I want to hear from those people who looked at both and went, this wasn't for, for our campus. And I think that, Dr. Spicer is, and Dr. Cornblum is where I'm coming from, hearing one side, but needing to hear what those others folks said. We're, we're going to make a selection, and Waco High has said they don't want it.
Is this, is the areas of growth, is that the feedback?
Yes.
From the schools?
So this feedback, yes.
Waco High and Tennessean and any other school that might have not voted for this, their feedback is in these areas of growth?
Correct, all this feedback is, yes, yes. So the strengths and weaknesses are, all this is from campuses, what the teachers provided. Like, all this information was compiled from all the campus feedback we received, and this is what's being presented.
So what's up there for Great Minds didn't just come from the rubrics of the campus, campuses who voted for Great Minds. That's collectively all the rubrics put together, the, these are their comments about this, whether they, they voted for it or they didn't vote for it. This is how they felt, and same for Kid 'em. So whether they wanted it or not, these are the things they said, and same for Agile Mine and, um, Carnegie.
Yeah, I think the administration, you know, chose this, and they have these teachers here telling us why. But I wanted to talk to the, um, 18-year veteran teacher, yeah, back here.
Sure.
So my, my question, um, have you been a part of a, a process like this before? As far as choosing curriculum and being involved at this level, have you, have you done this before?
So, uh, this is my first time being involved in this. Well, like we said, we've had this for, what, 11 years? So this, uh, it's about time for it to come up for adoption. So I was, um, I'm actually part of the math cohort that we have, so I've been a part of that process, building those, you know, what we, what she presented as our core beliefs and our values and what we expect for math. I'm, I'm part of that process. And then I was also, um, you know, as a campus rep, uh, going through that as well, so.
Yeah, I just, I think it's awesome to have this type of input and even having students involved in this.
I know, because you usually don't get any, like, as long as I've been here, and you're just given something. And so we actually like, hey, this is part, our opinion, and not just mine, I mean, like I said, it was the campus collective.
And so I believe the norm is for the administration to pick the curriculum and bring in teachers and students and all these, um, individuals in, at a, at a, you know, collabor, you know, collaborating like this. I think this is huge.
Yeah, it's very empowering.
I see the majority, I think we had 78% at the elementary school level. I think is, um, I think the teachers and the administration kind of, kind of speaking on this, and I'm listening to you, and I appreciate y'all being a part of the process, and bless math teachers.
I, I do have a question. I, I guess, um, the state might change every, tomorrow, right? So tonight, we might leave here and it changes. So I'm trying to, are you guys considering, like, would this be an easy resource to pivot with? If we're in a situation where we're stuck in this period where we can't?
We're, we're looking at this, um, right now as a one-year recommendation. Um, so we're not, we're not asking for a multi-year contract on this. So a one-year, now, I will say, like I said, if we felt collectively that we needed to pivot, um, you know, that's retraining and all of those things, which we would do if, if folks felt that way. But we're not locked into this for multiple years.
But, so there's no, there's no economic impact if one year from now, we say, we hate this?
I have those numbers. So with the new process, let me, let me talk about funding just a little bit. And I, I want you, and then they can speak to this, or just, I guess, vouch for it, is that funding was never mentioned in terms of, because we know with the new state, with 1605 came out, new funding recommendations, right? So used to, like I said, we were on a, sorry, a proclamation process, and you got money, um, every two years, or biennium, and you've got a per, a per pupil allotment. And you had that, and you used it to buy your textbooks and such, or instructional technology. So we have funding left, we're at the end of that biennium, but we're moving away from that, the, the state is. But we have, um, funding left in our old IMA account right now. For state board-approved resources, your high-quality instructional materials that you referred to, now your standard kind of allotment per student is $40 per student. Buying what they're calling open educational resources, which is this, the, the Blue Bonnet, but this was not a consideration. But that's where you get the $20 extra, so giving $60 per student, um, if you did that. So right now in IMA, we have around, in that, that whole pot, in those three buckets, um, 1,842,000 dollars in there. So in this, you have this in your, um, on your memo as well. So this adoption is 1,24,000, around-ish, rounded. So that would leave us with about 817,000. A million dollars for an adoption is pretty standard. Like, when we, when we bought our, um, pre-K adoption, it was over a million because of all the resources it had. What we would be on for is, um, with Blue Bonnet, um, Great Minds at the elementary, we would not have to pay for the digital platform again, or the, if, if we went on with it, right? If we continued, or the, um, teacher editions. We would only, we would only repurchase the workbooks for the student workbooks. So for, um, for the, let me go back. So for the elementary, that would be around 203,000. Um, for Carnegie, we would repurchase, um, part of the digital access again and student workbooks, which would be 263,000. So that would be the repurchase amount.
How many workbooks, Dr. Cornblum, uh, for each student in elementary with the Blue Bonnet?
Three.
Three, so we would be purchasing three workbooks every year? Or are those?
That is the total price I gave you for that.
So that, for, if we went with this and then we come back next year, we're going to purchase three workbooks for every student in elementary, correct? Yes or no?
Not separate, you're not being separate for three.
I mean, it's, it's a bundle, yeah.
But it's a bundle, but we'll be buying every year, three more workbooks?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
And with the current, like, adoptions, the old adoptions that were multi-year, eight-year adoptions, uh, you, well, five, you always had to add on more because it didn't get you there. You had to do workbooks every year too. Now, sometimes depending on how your contract was negotiated, your workbooks might be free for a certain amount of time, but there's always a point to where they're not free anymore, and you have to buy them again too. So it might be free for the first three years, and then you have to purchase again. Now, we always do that at the district level, that's not a, a cost that the campuses ever have to incur.
Mrs. Cornblum, or Dr. Cornblum, I'm so sorry. Thank you so much for, uh, it's evident that you have done a great job at, you and your team have done a great job at kind of setting all of this up and getting this. Uh, my question is, had you considered, you know, I look at this and I have, um, I wasn't aware of the other two districts that you, Ms. Flores, you were talking about, so thank you so much for that information. I was aware of a couple of districts in and around the state of Texas that I think had used this, and I was kind of looking at their numbers, and they're, it's kind of a wash, if not, um, uh, you, so I, so I feel a little uncertain as to kind of the data on some of this, and I know that there's, you know, checks, it, uh, I will say, of Waco ISD, we are one of the most unique districts in the state of Texas. There are very few districts that are the size of ours with the opportunities that we also have and the demographics that we have. So if you try to find an apples-to-apples comparison throughout the state of Texas, we're almost an anomaly. And so, um, it, it is kind of hard to kind of find kind of comparable districts. But I think, you know, when I'm looking at this, um, I know STAR is potentially going away, the legislator might give us money, won't give us money. There are so many things up in the air right now that I, and quite frankly, I don't even know how to say this kindly, so I won't say anything at all. But, um, I just, I just wonder if right now would be a test pilot? So where there's, are there some campuses that are gung ho for this? And have we considered doing like a, a pilot study of curriculum, maybe with those couple of campuses that are like, we are, this is it, ride or die?
Right.
Have we just considered, just to see the data?
So I'll be honest, no. Um, and the reason being is, you know, I think if we were sitting in a different place, it, that we, it hadn't been so long since we'd had a math adoption to where we, because, okay, no matter what the state does, I mean, whether we go to the BME testing, you know, beginning, middle of year, whatever they're going to do, no matter what they do, what's not going to change right now are our standards. So our standards were adopted not too long ago, a couple of years ago? You knew three? 15? 15, uh, was more than a couple of years ago. Seems like a couple of years ago, it really does. But they're not, they're not due for, you know, they're not going to change right now. So there's that. And so to look for something that's aligned to standards, no matter what we, whatever direction they go, one would hope that whatever direction they go would also be aligned to our standards. So there's that.
Yeah.
And then thinking about, um, would we offer a pilot? Here, here's where I sit with this. I, I know, I know we need a new resource, right? To Mr. Ochoa's point about the curriculum in general. I mean, we built that, these ladies have spent hours building that. So I know that the framework of that. So I know that the framework of that is something that they put their heart and soul into and believe in as well. So it is though, what we're using to teach with, that is the outdated, the outdated piece, right? That we need to help teachers with. It would be hard for me to only choose a few campuses to do a pilot when 11 and a half of our campuses said that they want this. So how do I choose from my 11 and a half to pick, well, some of you are going to get this, but the rest of you are going to keep, that would be hard for me, right? To determine that. And just knowing that, you know, the resource is, we need a new resource in general. So that's kind of where I sit with that. So no, I haven't considered it. I mean, just to be honest, I haven't, because just the fact that our resource is, is in need of a revamp.
And one thing I will add to that is, since I've got here in October, we have been listening to teachers give us feedback. And the feedback is, our lesson plan template, it's too much, it's too long. If you look at our curriculum, whether specifically with math and English, we have to go here, 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 just to get everything done. I have had lesson plans given to me from even some of you and some of our staff that says, hey, Dr. Spicer, this is what I do just to teach one lesson. And so the ask is to give us something, approve what we're asking, to make sure, number one, we can reach our students. We're not making the gains that we need, but we know that we're not able to internalize. So if we're going back to just the basics of this conversation, we're trying to get to a point to where our teachers are not overburdened, overwhelmed with all the work that they're doing just to try to teach a lesson, right? We know that there's a shortage on teachers across our nation. And right now, I'm going to be stingy. We're focusing on trying to keep, retain, attract people to Waco ISD. If this is going to support and meet the needs of our teachers as they meet the needs of our students, that's why we're making the recommendation. That's why our principals are making this recommendation. That's why our staff is making the recommendation, because we know there's a need and right now, we're not meeting it. And this is our, our ask, this is our hope. I want to make sure we can open the door for our students and give them what we have not been given the last few years, okay?
And I'll just be, just because we've talked so much about reading, and this isn't about a reading adoption, but looking at that, to also meet the need on the other side too, we're looking at using HMH through, they've made some changes in their curriculum to move to kind of an internalization process to where, and they now have the unit maps that we built, they now have those. And then with the, kind of a weekly plan built in as well. So moving to a similar process, but using that resource with it, because that resource isn't outdated. So, see, that's the thing. If we had a resource that wasn't behind, then we could do some of the similar things in math, right, with what we had. But it's just that the resource that we have right now, we've had a supplement to plug the holes that we know we have, so that they are teaching the students what they need to learn. But then that produces the things, you know, that y'all have all talked about and heard about with, with the planning and teachers having to go to multiple places. So we're trying to fix it on the other as well. It's just that that resource is more up to date and responding to Housefield 1605, and then this one is behind.
I appreciate the teachers being able to have input, like, teachers that I see in classrooms when I go around, so I appreciate that. I just want them to continue to be a part of the process. So as we're evaluating, I want their voices to stay at the table and not be silenced because we think we might need to pivot. If they think we need to pivot, I want to know that, as a board member, so.
I just wanted to say, after this process was over, I wrote written me standards and I said, thank you so much for allowing us to be involved in this process. The first time I was able to be involved in a process like this. And I felt heard. I felt like somebody was listening to me, somebody wanted to know what I thought, somebody wanted to see what the strengths and weaknesses were, that, you know, that I personally was involved in this process was a, was a really big thing for me. And it, we had multiple sessions where we were able to come. We came, we looked at all the things. Kidham had a video set up, and so we could look at it, we played with it. And on the other side, they had Great Minds, and we went ahead and we played with that. And so I just, I, I'm very appreciative of allowing us to come and talk.
Mr. Ochoa?
You, you mentioned that, that Blue Bonnet has a very clear scope and sequence. Our teachers have spent years developing our current scope and sequence. Does, if we adopt this, does that just go away? Are we just throwing that in the trash?
That hurts, but yes. I mean, to say that, because there's been a lot of hard work put into that, you know, it has. But it, it follows a different sequence. It follows a different pacing, a different sequence. And so we would have to switch to follow this pacing and sequence. We'll still have our curriculum site, it'll just look different.
Can you talk more about the pacing? What is the pacing like? Does it allow for?
And this, and this?
Right, does it allow plenty of room for reteaching, or is it?
Yes, it's built in. But I will, I want these folks to talk about it because they dug into it more, so I can say yes. But I want them to talk to you about how and when, if that's okay.
Okay, so for the elementary side, so we have 168 days. The curriculum allows for 165 days. So K2, they'll be fine because they're going, they're teaching up until May. What I'm going to have to do, if approved, I'll have to sit down with the vendor and kind of map out what that's going to look like for three, four, five, because we have to be done, well, depending on what happens with STAR testing and that kind of thing. But as of right now, we have to be done teaching content like early April to prepare for STAR. And so those days would have to be adjusted, but.
So we'd already have to tweak it, those higher levels?
Well, we will have to tweak as far as like, take it in like, which lessons are like high-leverage that we really need to get versus these, you know, I can kind of pull that out. And so yes, that will all be done with teachers, that will all be done for teachers, so they wouldn't have to worry about that. Again, as far as like lesson plans, lesson plans are already provided. So again, teachers would just have to internalize.
So, yeah, I'm sorry, I have two pages worth of questions. You mentioned lesson plans.
Correct.
So if this was adopted, an elementary school teacher would not, could copy and paste lesson plans?
So what will happen, and I have an example here if you would like to see it?
I just want to make sure. I feel like if we, when we grant more freedom, we sort of find a way to fill that space. And that's my concern, is that a teacher won't just be able to copy and paste lesson plans from week to week. Does that make sense? If the lesson plans are provided, if we have scripts for new teachers?
But then there will be processes in place at the district level as far as like, what internalization is going to look like in PLCs and that kind of thing. So the expectation comes from more internalization at that point.
Okay, but I'm saying if a teacher's spending three additional hours outside of school on lesson planning?
Correct, okay.
And an hour and a half of that is for math?
Okay.
Right, are we saying that that hour and a half is now free for them?
You're, so right now, our teachers are spending so much time writing a lesson plan?
And that's my other question too, why? I don't understand that. So we, we've already discussed that we're, where we're going to be providing some sort of lesson plan for reading next year, right? Why can't we do that for math?
It, it comes with that. They're not going, when they say internalization process, it comes with your plan. So what they have to do is they read the plan, and you're talking about, okay, we're teaching this standard group activity, what does that mean? How does that look? When I stand in front of the kids, how am I introducing that, right? They talked about misconceptions, so what might a misconception be? How do we address that? Well, I know that my kids are going to struggle with this, so I might do, I know. And so they talk through the plan.
But that's just done during PLCs? Or is it, when is that done?
Some, all of it is not done during PLCs, because at the elementary level, PLC is usually one time a week for 45 minutes. So depending on, each campus does it differently. It kind of depends on what they have planned for teachers that day. But I can say now, with our math framework, the reason why it's taking so long is because we do, they do have to supplement with so many resources. So our framework starts with fluency. And so right now, teachers are having to go find a resource, okay?
So that's, that's my, where my confusion is. We've had this curriculum since 14, right? Why have we not provided that to teachers already? If we know where the weak spots are, why do they still have to go look for it? Like, why can't we, why can't we just tell them where to look? Why can't we give it to them?
Yeah, I mean, so that's what I had to do. When I came into this role, I did identify the gaps. And from there, I went and found supplemental resources for where those gaps were.
I think, let me, let me clarify and see.
Y'all are basically just saying the resources will be in one place now with this?
When she says go and look, like, they've provided a resource, but I don't open Envision, which is the current resource, and have it all in there. We may have provided a fluency piece over here. We have problem of the day, or target the problem, yeah, which is digital. That goes, that's posted up here. So that would get projected. That's not an Envision, that's another piece, right? So we do know where the gaps have been. And when she says go and find, I'm going to have to go in this resource that we've gotten and pull my fluency from here. I'm going to go, you know, to my warm-up and pull it from here. So it's not just, oh, here's this Envision math resource. We know it doesn't have anything, you know, too bad, so sad. We've bought them so that, other things, so they don't have to go find on their own. But it's still going to more than one place, to your point.
And I guess that's, you know, I'm thinking about my own job, and there are lots of different processes for lots of different things. But we wrote them down, you know? So if a new person came in, I could just hand them a sheet of paper and say, start at one, and go to the end. And Ms. Flores mentioned that a lot of the districts who weren't successful using Blue Bonnet, it was because they didn't use it with 100% fidelity. Do we have a history in this district of teaching curriculum with 100% fidelity?
I think that that has been an issue sometimes. I think there are many reasons for that. I think when you have, we have a lot of turnover, you know, we have a, we talked about what they say, 22% new teachers, around that. And so that, it looks different when you, when you have those things. This does come with a protocol written out. Now, to your point though, I mean, with the current curriculum, that lesson planning protocol is the way to go through and lesson plan, right? Now, people take that to varying extremes, but that is, that is the process. We do have best practices in place for when we lesson plan, how do you go through that? Do we all do that with fidelity? We, we've all talked about, right? That, that doesn't always happen. And there, like I said, there are reasons for that. That is where though, I think, our principals, principal supervisors, us, them being in classrooms, our instructional specialists, you know, we're just all going to have to be diligent about if we say this is what we're going to do, that those are non-negotiables. You know, Mr. Allen was looking at different programs that are being used across the district, purchased or not purchased, and Teachers Pay Teachers has a really high hit level of people getting in and pulling lessons off of Teachers Pay Teachers. Well, I can assure you that those lessons are no place in our curriculum. So just ensuring that everyone, you know, really, that if this is what we say, and that would be with anything. I mean, you're going to have to, because we, to your point too, to know if something's working or not working, you can't know that if we're not using it with fidelity. Is it that we're not using it with fidelity, or is it not working because it's not working? And so that, that has to be, I mean, we all have to, you know, agree to get on board with that, and it has to happen.
And that's the issue that I have, because it seems to me that when the state approves a curriculum, it, in my mind, it tells me, if you do this, A to Z, your kids will be successful, right? I mean, granted, there are some outliers.
Right.
But that's not the case, like, anywhere in the state of Texas.
That's right.
So I don't, I don't, I, okay, let me move on. What happens if we do nothing? Like, do we have to adopt a new curriculum today? And if we don't, what happens?
So if, if, if we do nothing, then we continue on our current path with our current resource. Teachers will continue lesson planning the way that they currently are, because the internalization and such is not with this curriculum the way it is. Like, we're able to pivot with HMH a bit, to take a little bit of that planning load off of our teachers. You know, we'll, we'll continue doing DDI, looking at our data, reteaching, and doing the things we're doing. But, you know, the resource will continue to be 11 years old. And so that, that's the main, you know, thing, is just that it's, it, it's outdated at this point, which is why teachers are having to go to multiple places.
Can we ask the teacher from Kendrick that question, or from Carver that question?
Yeah, please. I, I mean, I think I speak for, at least my campus, we are ready for something different. It's not, I, I think that just being blunt, sticking with what we have is not the answer. So, that's just my.
I will say this, though, just. So you were asking a different question, like, what would, what would happen with our current curriculum? What will we do? We would keep following it, we would, you know, constantly, every year, they look and get feedback to see if there are places that still need to be refined, you know, get more to where something didn't quite work, the order of something or something along those lines, we would continue doing that. What though, and that's if we just, if we just chose to do nothing, right? It was also asked at another time, well, what would happen if we went this way and not that way? Like, if we voted for one rea, like, there were three and a half campuses that wanted Kidham. So what, if we didn't approve this one, would we just go with Kidham? And the answer is, no, we wouldn't, because that would not be honoring the voices from our 11 and a half campuses. And what did I say? 218 out of 280 teachers. So what we would do is we would put it on hold for another year and go through this process again next year. If, if, if we don't make a determination tonight, we would wait.
Which would be roughly, Dr. Cornblum, the same thing. If we went for Blue Bonnet and it didn't work, we would?
We could.
Evit and change. So we really are looking at either going with Blue Bonnet or staying with our same, same curriculum with curriculum and instruction, helping meet those holes for another year, which would then bring us back to looking at these curriculums or, or other curriculums that will be coming forward. Am I correct on that?
If we stayed?
Yes, ma'am.
Either way, right? Yes, if we stayed, that's what would happen.
We won't be penalized, we're not, the money is still going to be?
We would be out, yeah, okay, no, 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 not, not fully. The 20 we lose. So the $40 per student rolls over, the 20, although that's not a consideration, but we would lose that. You have to spend that by August 31st to be able to, to use it this year, or to keep it, rather, you know, to.
Can I ask, I apologize, I'm, I'm the new guy, and I've never done anything like this. Is this the typical timeframe that we do this in? Like, this, it feels hurried to me? And maybe this is a unique scenario, Dr. Spicer's just gotten here. Like, we're talking about spending a million dollars, which is nothing. And it just feels hurried? It feels to me like we could have started this process sooner. I don't know that I feel fully equipped to like, make a great decision on this. I don't know that there's really great data that tells me like, hey, if we spend this money, then our, our test scores are gonna, they're gonna improve.
But we do have data that what we're using right now is not working?
Yeah, I know, I know. But to spend a million dollars, I would want to know that like, it's going to get better. And, and so I, I guess my question is like, is this the timeline that we've always done this in the past? Like, when we've adopted a different curriculum? Have we started the process sooner? Have we?
It depends when they roll out. So let me tell you right now, so things that are being looking at for next year aren't even approved yet. So like, they're out there, they're sitting out there, but will they be approved? We don't know if they're going to be approved. And they're not, there's also, you've got to look, things that are being, that are in consideration, are there some full, some of these same things? And some are just supplemental, approved for you to use them in supplemental ways. So we, those aren't even viable right now, right? Usually when we adopt a textbook, it, the length of the process is about the same, right? So the amount of time when we started this viewing in February, going through it, bringing it to you, is, that wasn't hurried. Usually, to my liking, this would have been brought to you at least a month earlier, right? So in terms of that, but it didn't hurry us up on the amount of time we spent looking at it.
But then walk me through the implementation of it, because now we're a month behind that.
Where it just, when we, so they'll have their resources for planning. The digital platform will open, the workbooks and all will be delivered over summer. That, I mean, like, all the student workbooks and all of those things will be delivered over summer. So if, if we were to approve, the process is, there's another thing in your consent agenda tonight to approve the TEAC certification. You have to do that every year before you can draw money down from your instructional materials allotment. Usually, we would have done that last month, but we couldn't do that, you're right. I mean, we needed to wait to see the direction we wanted to go here. mean, we needed to wait to see the direction we wanted to go here. So usually you do that. The ordering system where you order has been closed until today. So we couldn't have ordered materials for next year until tomorrow because it's closed through the 15th. So we couldn't have ordered sooner for that's concerned anyway. So when you consider it within that timeframe, it's, it wasn't even open. But typically, you, it would have been sitting there waiting, oh, it opens tomorrow, so now we can order, right? So here we are today, it'll open tomorrow, we turn our stuff in and we'll get to order.
I think, too, we're not picking a curriculum as a board. We're hearing a recommendation from teachers in the administration. So I think we're not in the classrooms every day. So to hear from, but we've heard the issues with lesson planning, we've heard the issues around curriculum. So I think if they're telling us this is what we need to solve those issues, I think we have to support. And I also want to be clear that in my mind, the, the mark of achievement doesn't change irregardless of what, what curriculum we adapt. So we expect growth, we expect student achievement, no matter what. I think you guys are just telling us this would help us get there in a more efficient way.
I, I want to, can I, can I address Mr. Bloodsoe one more time because Brittany was reminding, and I said this earlier, but I don't know if y'all caught it. So the showcase at Region 12 was February 18th. So that's the first time we were able to see the resources. So the EMRA, this is the part I didn't tell you, the EMRA resources were approved in November by the state. They were available for review from us in February. And that was the symposium at Region 12, which we went to. And so we brought it back and then started the process after that. The state kind of developed the.
But we could, if we, if we were to wait a year, we, we would have another year data, we would have more time to look at it, evaluate it, possibly make a more educated decision.
See the, so my, my partner here.
And I hope you know, I hope y'all know how grateful I am. I know you guys have put, I know you guys have put a ton of work into this. Don't hear any of my questions is like.
No, no, no.
In any way feeling like you guys haven't done a great job.
Any, in any way personal. She was saying that on the new list that's being reviewed, there are no new resources on there. What supplemental, and then some of the programs like iReady, for instance, that didn't pass our review. Many reasons why it didn't pass, but one of the reasons, one, because your kids didn't like it.
Amen.
I'm like.
Tell my daughter you said that.
Another reason is because part of that program wasn't, so I, I can't remember. I think it was like K2 was approved and 3-5 wasn't. So it's going through review, but, so it's the same iReady, but 3 through 5 would possibly be added, added in. But there were other parts of that program besides that that caused us not to go with it. So we, we would not want to probably go with that regardless because of what we know. And the testing platform, the rest, the intervention platform that we use, whole different scenario than what the curriculum that they're putting forward is right now. They, they need to do some revisions, in our opinion.
Great.
So wait another year, we still be bringing back the same resources.
I mean, yeah.
Mr. Vedanya?
I just want to support what Mr. Davis is saying. I visit a lot of campuses, school events. One of the things we always ask is, what, 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 what do we need to do to help y'all? And y'all are telling us what we need to do to help y'all. And, you know, we, I think we should give y'all the help y'all need when y'all are asking for it. And, you know, that's what, which I want right here on this percentages.
So I, thank you so much, Mr. Vedanya. I, I'm, I'm wondering, just because I see this and I see some split campuses and it feels like we already have an issue with fidelity, that I'm wondering if some campuses that have buy-in, you know, the teachers have seen it and they love it and they're saying to all of their teachers, we want to do this. If there is consideration for the campuses that already have some sort of buy-in with it to go ahead and pilot it so that when those campuses are showing their incremental gains, then they can talk to, those principals can talk to the other principals who can talk to their teachers. I just, I just think that the buy-in piece and the fidelity piece stick out to me. Some of the differentiation pieces also, I'm a little hesitant on that because of the scriptedness and the rigidness, rigidity of it, the lack of, a small group, it, it, there's, there's a couple of hindrances. And then the fact that I know that we have 22% are first-year teachers, but we're talking about almost 78% are not. So I, I think I'm looking at this and I want to, my natural inclination is pilot it and test it and see what kind of outcomes you get, what kind of fidelity you get to the program and see what kind of data comes forth. And then from that point, that natural, if there is an increase in data, that natural increase in incremental gains will then probably trickle into the rest of our district. And I think our, our principals talk to each other. And if something's working for some principal, they're going to say, this is working for me. And then other principal's going to say, show me what that is. So that, 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 that is my one, you know, we're dropping a million three, a million four on Blue Bonnet curriculum. And I would hope, I would hope that we are not just buying into curriculum because we get extra money from the state at the expense of our kids.
We, we have, we have the funding to purchase it without the 20 and have some money left over. And these guys can tell you that never one time, and never even our district discussions was the money even out there. And quite honestly, when we started reviewing it, other than, yeah, I knew the 20, I hadn't really paid much attention, really, to exactly how, not to be irresponsible because I was more interested in getting a good resource. And so I hadn't really paid attention until, okay, once we narrowed it down, okay, what would this mean in dollars, right? Because we wanted the resource that, that they felt was the best. And so whatever, you know, that was up there and put out there, really didn't run the dollars on it till after. Can you clarify just one thing for me because, so I know how to respond? When you were saying pilot, were you, were you suggesting that we pilot Blue Bonnet with the campuses who wanted that and Kid 'em with the campuses who wanted that? Or keep what we have and use this? Because I have, I have thoughts and the struggle there, but I want, I want you to tell me what you meant, please.
Yeah, no, 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 thank you so much for asking that question. I think I, in my mind, was thinking, okay, if some campuses are completely comfortable with the current math curriculum and the hodgepodge patchwork of it, then they can continue with that. I'm not thinking of buying a different curriculum and starting two different curriculums because then you would not have a control. But to go through and say, okay, if there are campuses that really are excited about this Blue Bonnet curriculum, letting them pilot that. And I'm, you, and I'd love to hear your thoughts. And I also want to say, I'm so glad that this administration is not just looking for the extra money from the state because I think that is not putting kids first. And in my mind, it has to be what is going to meet the needs of our kids, what's going to help our educators and any way that we can kind of undergird that, I think, is, at least from my perspective, is what I would want to do. And I don't want to, I don't want to just fold at the whims of our governor.
Let me speak to what you talked about and just tell you my concerns with that. So on one hand, I get what you're saying to let some campuses try and pilot and, and those who, I won't, I don't ever use the word buy-in not to say that, because you're never going to have it. But what we hope for is to get commitment to whatever it is that we're, we're using, right? Or whatever it is you're trying to do. But in our district, now this might be different for a couple of our campuses because of the way those campuses, how the enrollment works on those campuses. But for the most part, we have pretty mobile campuses, right? We have kids who are moving between in a lot of instances. And so the Blue Bonnet curriculum is on a different scope and sequence and pacing than our current curriculum. So for kids who move, and, and we are a highly mobile district, we could be inadvertently creating gaps ourselves for our kids. Because if I've been on this campus not piloting and this campus who is, and I move, and things are taught at different times, then we could have created a gap. And then it's also continuing to support the campuses in two different ways. And I have one elementary person and one secondary person. So we continue to do math P D on the current curriculum we have, right? Around pedagogy best practices and all of those things so that we can get better at our teaching in general. So we would be supporting those guys on our current curriculum, we would have to, right? Support them in one way and then support the folks that moved to the pilot stage in another way. So a couple of concerns there. I, you know, choice is great, but when we're looking at ensuring that we're providing consistency in the same educational experience for all of our kids across our district, then it scares me to, to do two different things.
That makes, that makes perfect sense, yeah. Thank you for sharing that. Teachers, you can have a seat and we can call you back up if you need to. You've been on your feet all day, so.
I do have a question for the teachers. This is kind of a dumb question, but I'm thinking.
Never mind, sorry.
I'm thinking of the, of the TOS test and teams test and tax test and STAR test. Has the math changed since I was in elementary school? I mean, are we still adding cantaloupes and subtracting watermelons and, I mean?
Yeah, the TEACs have changed.
The TEACs have changed. Has the math changed?
The math hasn't changed, but there's expectations in different levels. So think of it this way, back in the day, third grade math is now, let me rephrase, eighth grade math is now a fifth grade math, right? And so there's some different things that they're expecting from us in our classrooms. And right now, the resource that we have, it's not giving it to us. And we're not getting results. And so that's why our kids aren't able to produce like they need to, whether it's a state test or a national test. In my mind, our goal is always like, what is S A T, A C T? What does that world look like? And we need to prepare, be preparing our kiddos for that. But it's going to start in the classroom, right? And of course, STAR will take care of itself, but we have to do some things different because we're not getting those results that we say we, we want our kids to get and, and they deserve.
I think division is division, multiplication is multiplication, yeah. The questions they're putting in front of our kids now, the multi-level layers, two-step, three-step, you know, all these, and at what level is very different. It, it's, it's escalated, it, you know, just like reading, right? Our, used to, you know, kindergarten was more of that socialization type year. Now that's not even pre-K really. But now you read when you leave kindergarten and you do math when you leave. So everything has just been pushed down in general. But even within that, even if it weren't kind of pushed, our kids are just being asked to process at a higher level than what we may have been, or at least what we were tested at, at that level. It just looked, that's what looks different.
And if, if we were, we have 90 days till the first day of school. So if we were to order this tomorrow, would we have time to train and have everything we need?
We already have, so yes, to order. And then we already have the P D plan because that's the pre-work we do to be prepared, right? In the event that it's approved, we were already looking at those things. So the P D plan's already rolled out and dates are secured so that we have the vendors on hand to roll out the training. And then these guys will be working over the summer and with our teachers as well on ensuring that the internalization process, what you might call the planning process, but not lesson planning, different from, is in place and solid. And that's some of the things that they'll be working on over the summer.
And you mentioned that it's easy to pivot from this if it doesn't work.
Easy in that we're not locked into it, right?
Well, that's my concern.
I mean, we're not locked into it, but if you switch, just like, I mean, just like if we're switching from our resource now to a new one, it's the new training and all of that that's going to come on board. So if at the end of this year, you know, we were, everybody hated it, they're like, oh, this is the worst thing we ever, you know, we thought it was going to be great, but no. And we had to switch, then we go through this process again. And, you know, like I said, the resources out there may not be, may not be a lot of options, but we would look at those things. And so whatever was decided at that time, it would go through this again and then we would develop a new training plan and a new implementation plan.
Do we know where we're weak now, based on our test scores?
Yes. You want to talk to that?
Do we know where we're, where Blue Bonnet is potentially weak?
Do you know where Blue Bonnet is potentially weak?
Like, if, my concern is, like, right now, we know what we need to improve, right? Whatever that is, we know what it is, hopefully after 10 years, 11 years. My concern is that we get to the end of next year and we say, well, turns out this one has some similar issues compared to what we were already doing. And, and the only difference is we've lost a year and a million dollars. Does that make sense?
It does. So the question was our data. So we know what our STAR data tells of, well, any data really, right? iReady, any data, but what our data tells us of where we're weak, we know in our current curriculum where it's weak, so we've supplemented. Do we know where Blue Bonnet might be weak and how that connects to our data? Like, would we find ourselves in the same place? Have you researched it to that level?
I can say right now, our current resource, resource, sorry, is very procedural. And so it's lacking in that conceptual foundation. And so what Blue Bonnet offers is that CRA where we're start, like, building conceptual understanding. So the why behind something and versus the procedural is more like how, how you're solving something, right? So it's, it's embedded. So the CRA is embedded, so you're starting with the concrete and then we're going to representational versus abstract versus now with our resource, it's just procedural. So we're going right to word problems and we're not building that foundational understanding so students are not retaining that information. So that's like a big area where we're lacking. Also with rigor, with our current resource, when you look at STAR and things like that, the questioning in our current resource is not aligned to the level of rigor that students would see on STAR. So I would say like, that's a gap. But I feel like with any new resource, you're not going to know until you implement and like you go through it, right? Regardless, like, that's how we were able to find the gaps that we have now by implementing and then going from there.
Historically, there's a gap when you implement new, I mean, not a gap, but a dip.
A dip.
When you implement new curriculum, right? Anywhere.
Yeah.
You're talking about gap within the resource, like you find.
No, I mean, I'm more concerned with the.
Student achievement, it goes down.
Next year to look at STAR scores and see that they're stagnant or God forbid negative and, and us use this, well, it's a new curriculum and that's, you know, first year and I'm just kind of a little tired of reasons why we aren't doing something.
So I guess my question would be, if I could go off Mr. Ochoa's, is with our schools where they're at right now, you're saying our curriculum has been deficient, thus.
The resource is.
The resource has been deficient, so sorry. Resource has been deficient, there's a lot of hot patchwork that needs to be done, our kids aren't making the gains, we don't have STAR scores yet.
Correct, to know.
And we do, to know, so those won't come back till the summer. Then we have, we've got a year, we, we, if we were to approve this curriculum now, we do all the training, we have everything we're doing into year, and then we already know that there is going to be a dip in achievement. I think my question is, can we afford that dip in achievement? Are our students, have our students made enough gains that we can, our campuses can take a dip in math?
I mean, it's unknown. I mean, you know, I, so to say, a lot of times when you implement something, there's a dip, yeah, sometimes that happens. Will it happen? I don't know, you know? I mean, the, I think your hope is we're implementing with fidelity, we don't see the gap. We don't know what our scores look like this year, so that, that's a timing thing, you know, in terms of understanding that. If we wait until STAR, until we get STAR scores and analyze that, then we'll be too late to, to try to do this for this upcoming year where that's concerned. So I, I think at any, any year, whatever year it is, when we look at implementing something new, those questions are still going to be there. Will we take a dip? Will we not, you know? And then to say, well, I don't know. I, I, you know, I, I can't answer that with 100% certainty that we will or we won't.
Can I ask a question? Uh, and anybody can clarify this. You guys are saying we know what we're doing now is not working and we will not see the growth that we need with the current curriculum. And the issues that we saw with that one, we feel this new one is solving those issues. I think we're all clear, irregardless of the decision we make, we want to see student achievement. So even if there's a dip at the end of the year, I wouldn't want to hear it because of this change. I would want us to adjust.
That raises a bigger question, right? If, if we can say, we know what we're doing, right, isn't working. Why didn't we change it eight, nine years ago? You know, I mean, that's what, that's what I'm trying to.
They actually did. There was a curriculum bought before this curriculum, actually. I forget what it was. And they kept it for just a small amount of time and then switched to this, which then has, and I say, because I wasn't here, that's why I said they um, switched to this, which they've now had for 11 years. Um, the way we pivoted, because we were looking at a math adoption following kind of that cycle, the way we pivoted was buying, you know, the things as to, to not just STAR, but also knowing where our kids were struggling, right? Like if we know that our kids, we need more support, like the, the problem of the day. We know, we know that our kids need more support in problem solving and higher level thinking. And so that's where that came in and it also fits with our new model. But switching the model in general came from the fact of we needed to change the way our kids think about math. And so those were our reactions or pivots to work within what we had to try to change what we had as the state was working through its thing to adopt new resources.
I guess my, the ending of what I was trying to say is that, but we will here. If we don't adopt this and we don't see the scores that we want to, you guys will say, well, we needed a new resource.
I think we have to look at why, right?
I'm just, because I think all of us want to avoid an excuse as what we're feeling like we've been hearing. But I'm, I'm saying that I don't think us adopting this curriculum is us saying that we're okay with students not having achievement. And I don't want any, any confusion here. I'm not saying that it's okay for our students not to achieve if we adopt this curriculum.
Right.
But what I am hearing is they're telling us that they need this to do their job. And I, I would be worried if we didn't do this and then we complain about the results when we didn't give them the resources that they asked for. I just want to point that out.
So, whoo, lots has been, you know, brought before us here. Um, a couple of points, um, about the copy and paste lesson plans. I think the misconception is like, oh, well, if I have the plans all set for me that I can be on the beach sipping Mai Tais. That's not the case. Even as a veteran teacher, I have to go through this. It's time, it's hard, it's effort, regardless of how many years you have under your belt. I would have to go through, I'm actually switching grade levels. I, I taught fourth grade before, like seven-ish years ago, it runs together. Um, I've been in second. Part of the reason why I left fourth grade or asked to move down was because how daunting it is to teach a STAR grade. When you have to understand that kids coming in my classroom, most of them are not tier one. They're two and three. And so what's frustrating as a teacher is when I'm trying to get that first teach to the whole class, this is the state of Texas. This is that achievement that we are trying to reach. We're, we're, we're shooting for up here. That's what we're always shooting for because that's what we want. But the reality is that's not what we have in front of us. So when I'm trying to get to that tier one, what we're saying is the current resource that we have doesn't get us there. Already we're behind from the jump. And we can go back and say, well, why didn't we change it? But the fact is we didn't and here we are now. And so I'm ready to move on and even moving up now, I'm having to go back. I'm fourth grade again, um, and I'm having to reprocess everything. I'm having to look at it all again. And if we keep what we have, it's now, okay, let's go back. How does STAR test this? You said, well, has the math changed? The TEES have changed. Yes, I know there's some, some seventh grade standards that are now fourth grade standards. I'm having to look at, okay, well, how is it tested? What do I have? Where do I have to reach that? And then again, I'm reaching those tier one kids and that's oftentimes a small, sadly, oftentimes a small percentage of what's in my classroom. And then now I'm going back and I'm having to do all this other, um, like gap filling for my tier twos to get them all because we want them all to achieve. You talk about students first, I call it being naive, but this was my first time doing this process. I had zero concept of, we got money for kids and what? Like that was never, ever, ever brought to the table. I didn't know that till way after the fact. And like you said, I mean, maybe it was just me being naive. But that was not a consideration. We were just looking at, look at what we have now. It's not working. You asked for teacher voice? I mean, I think it was pretty clear. We gave you teacher voice. We said, this is, this is better than what we have. Now, money, that's y'all's, that's your thing and we're, you know, we're going to live there. But if you're, you're asking teachers, okay, I thought, I thought that vote was pretty clear. Um, to relate it to, I mean, I'm not trying to be political, but we, we voted for a president. We're not going back and saying, okay, this is all the reasons why. We've picked a curriculum. That's what we're presenting to you. That, this resource is what we said, hey, this is what we think is best. We're presenting it to you and if not, then this is what we're left with. I'm having to go back, even as, you know, and I've done this before and we keep talking about the, the new teachers, but even a veteran teacher, I'm veteran, but I'm going to be brand new all over again. So it's still going to be that same time. And now I'm having to go through, okay, well, what does envision, where are the holes in it again? Because I haven't been in fourth grade in a minute, so it doesn't matter. Like across the board, you're going to have to do that with whatever it is. And so, I don't know, I just, you, you want a teacher voice, we gave it to you. We, I mean, it's our heart and our soul. Um, we talk about teaching with fidelity. I, I don't know who you're talking to or looking at when you're saying that because by golly, it's, I mean, the blood, sweat and tears getting emotional in these classrooms, like we're doing what we can. And we're just asking to maybe do something where the load is not so much. Because now I'm having to, and then all the other factors that, we're just talking academics. I mean, hello, we have behaviors and, you know, trauma-filled students that you're still having to, you know, do. I mean, you think it's just, oh, it's as easy as sitting down, but, oh, my, my daddy went to jail. I mean, you know, there's so many things going on and I'm not making excuses for that. I'm just saying that there's so many factors and components and things to think about. And like I said, if you need me to leave, I will go, but that's, that's.
Thank you so much, Ms. Menos. I definitely empathize. And I think every single person on this board would empathize with you and with teachers. And I think that is why, um, we are very concerned in terms of lesson, the, the workload that is on the teachers and our staff. And that is why, um, we, um, yes, so I just want to say thank you to each one of you. Thank you. I know you've been on your feet all day and you're still on your feet. So you can take a seat if you would like, please. Just sit down and stay here and listen. Um, the, uh, my, my question, I'm going back again to, uh, kind of what, uh, Mr. Ochoa had said when he said, okay, we, we've adopted this curriculum in 2015 and teachers have been asking for something different. And somehow we've kind of stayed on the same path. And so, but then I hear you saying, oh, we're going to, we could do this curriculum, but that we could switch in a year. And, and I guess I am, I'm pausing to ponder how we went through something for 10 years and didn't switch and how we're going to pivot for one year and what systems are in place to really capture teacher voice, principal voice, staff voice. I know that we have a feedback button on our current lessons. But just if this is not working, how?
Well, we can more directly ask for feedback. I mean, our principal meetings, they have their cohort meetings, surveys, you know, there's multiple ways that we can. Going back to the adoption though, the old process just worked differently. I mean, the, the, the way the state adopted textbooks, the way you did your contracts, all of that. So like I said, typically when you went into a contract, it was a five to eight year contract. Um, and these, um, I mean, you could go into multiple year contract now, but they're not recommending it um, kind of for that reason. And so, and the, how often things were reviewed um, was not the same as they're doing it now. And so with the old process, once that whole big textbook adoption process happened, it didn't happen again for a number of years. And so it's just that with, with household 1605 and all of that legislation, it just all changed. And so, um, I think you can more easily pivot. So I, like I said, I wasn't here when they had the resource they had and then they did change. Um, which you could have at that time bought, adopted a resource and then, and like Waco did, and then bought a new resource. Um, it's just the funding that you got, you know, you have that money every biennium, every two years. And so whatever they spent would be pushing that all aside and ensuring they had enough funding to be able to fund a new adoption to go into that. And I know this one, I think. Is this current adoption five, six, eight? What was this adoption? And when we, when we renewed, there wasn't a new, um, a, a new set of textbooks out there to adopt. Does that make sense? Like they hadn't gone through a new request from vendors for new textbooks. So there wasn't a new crop of materials to adopt from back when we extended ours for the next little bit. So we extended and plugged.
So I guess what I'm hearing from you is from this, you're going to build in, like, like the current system that we did the workshop on. I love that you had feedback on every lesson, like what worked, what didn't. I think that is, feedback is always a great tool to use specifically for, in teaching. So I, I guess I'm just.
And, and I think we'll need to as well to learn, you know, as you said, when you were talking to Mr. Ochoa about usually with any resource, you're going to find some things that you don't like perfectly, right? And I think we're going to have to ask for frequent feedback along the way for people to identify anything that might be realized. You know, they did a very thorough review, but it, it's not as if you sit there and go through every single page, you know, every lesson, start to finish, like you would as if you were teaching it. And so I think getting frequent feedback to understand, um, if at the end of the year, you know, we don't see the data that, or we need to pivot, whatever it is, that we have some really solid evidence as to why, you know? And that's also ensuring that implementation was, was good to also be able to know that that wasn't a reason why that it.
If, if we stay with our current curriculum, what is the, what is our total buy? What's the dollars? If we stay with the current curriculum now, is there any outlay that we have to, none? So we're kind of taking a million dollar gamble?
Yeah, I mean, with any new adoption, you would, but yeah.
I guess, I guess that's where I'm confused is.
Do we have to buy work?
It just feels to me like, are we in a position to, to make a million dollar gamble and get it wrong?
Are y'all okay with calling it a million dollar gamble? I want to hear from you guys because it sounds like y'all did research, anybody. It sounds like y'all did research and y'all went through a process and we're calling it a gamble. Is it a gamble or did we do our research and we think this is our best bet? That's the difference between a gamble and something that we did research on and went through.
I feel like we did our due diligence and looked at all the products that are available to us thoroughly.
So only the data, only the data would say, this is the solution based on data, right? I mean, that, to me, that's what.
The data we're receiving or the data we have?
If, if I'm looking at, at a curriculum and I say, look, District Y implemented this district, they look very similar to our district and it worked. And that is the only difference is that they implemented this new curriculum. Then I would have a lot more confidence.
But our data currently that we have in our district.
Okay, hold on, hold on, hold on, guys. If you want to address, um, from the DAS, if you would just ask me so I can kind of help facilitate the conversation because we're kind of piping up and not allowing everyone to kind of finish.
Madam President, can I?
Hold on, hold on, one second. Mr. Bledsoe, I think, was the one who had said, you, you had asked about the million dollar. Do you feel like your answer was completely, do you feel like your question was answered?
I, maybe, maybe, maybe to Mr. Davis's point, maybe gamble is not the, maybe that's not the right way, way to say it. Um, but I think what Mr. Ochoa said, like, if I'm going to go for my business, if I'm going to go make a million dollar investment on a machine, um, I want to have data from, from other customers that have used that, that have said, hey, we, we were using this machine before and we went to this machine and our, and our productivity went up X. And I want to see that multiple times where I feel very confident that if I make that million dollar investment, then I can with, with, not 100% certainty because every school district's different and circumstances are different. But I can feel with high confidence that that's, that's a good buy. And I'm not sure we have that here. I think what we're all saying is like, what we're, what we're doing isn't working, okay? But if we go to this, do we have any like meaningful data that says it's going to fix it? Because if I've got a machine that I say is not working and I go, well, it's not working. We got to do something different. Let's just go spend a million dollars on, on this one. And that doesn't work. Well, now I've fixed my problem and I'm out a million dollars.
Um, so I'll say this, Kid 'em has no data because it's brand new. So there's zero data on it to know if it worked or not. Um, this whole process that they're going through is new. So a lot of these programs or resources as they are now, maybe companies that have been around, um, because Carnegie's been around, but it, but all of this is fairly new, right? So just years and years of data to show success, like across the board, it's just not there yet. Now, we do have, right here, um, a list of districts and their, their STAR scores at Meets level. This is a whole list, but I mean, percentage, average percent change of students at Meets level. And I can't tell you right now with all of them, there's a list here of how similar or different they are from us. But at Meets level, they're different, they're showing percent increases of 20% over time. 20%, 14%, 7%, 5%, um, you know, all the way down to one and a half percent. And this is over two years. So, I mean, there's a, a list of schools on here. So it's, you know, it's, it's different levels across the board. But this is, um, this is achievement at the Meets level. So the percent increase at Meets.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Thank you.
Yeah, I think for me, there is no machine in public education or education. If there were, we would have bought the machine. What are we, I mean, I, I think it's just going to be nothing that we can guarantee. There's never going to be a district that's exactly like ours that we can look at five years of data and say, if we do exactly what they did, we're going to guarantee results. What I hear you guys saying is irregardless of what we choose, there will be gaps that we have to fill. This is our best bet to have the least modifications possible at this point. And I don't, I'm, I'm confused on the level that we're judging it off. I just think there, there won't be another district that we can look at that looks just like Waco SD. I think President Cordowick stated that at the beginning. And we do see the data from other districts that it is working. And what we do know is what we have isn't working. So I don't, I don't think that is an option. So I guess if, if we're exploring other options beside, if we don't adopt this for whatever reason, we have to do something different, right? We wouldn't just keep doing what we know doesn't work. So what would that other option look like?
It would be, it would be continuing to refine what we have, looking at what our data says this year from STAR and seeing if any of those areas that, you know, were low or didn't achieve where we should have achieved, is that an area that, you know, for some reason there wasn't alignment or whatever? It's, it's doing all the things you all want us to do, right? It's responding to data, making adjustments because of the data, um, and, and changing our curriculum within what we have because of that. So that's what we would do. Um, we would look at our interventions. We will still look at our interventions because this is for tier one instruction, right? This is for our first teach, still analyze interventions and see if we need to do something different there. So we'd be doing all of those things, but with a resource that's still outdated.
If the, you're saying outdated, so it's not useful for what you guys need it for. If the, you're saying outdated, so it's not useful for what you guys need it for? Because if, it, it might be at a third grade level, but that third grade level is now a kindergarten level, but we don't have numer.
It just doesn't do it all, you know? Yeah. I mean, we're just having to provide other places. So it's not to say that we're putting third grade math in front of fifth graders. It's saying that we're having to find other resources to accompany that current resource to ensure that if there is a place where it doesn't meet the mark, we have a supplemental resource that does.
And to my understanding, if I may interrupt.
Okay, Mr. Vedanya, hold on.
Can I just hear her example? She was giving me examples.
So two things. So like, I'll give you an example of that. So in our current resource, we already listened, the standard cost for students to be able to do expanded notation, our resource does not hit on expanded notation. So I had to go find a supplemental resource that does. Another example, kindergarten, the standard cost for students just to be able to identify coins, but the, the workbook has students actually counting coins. And so it's not aligned in some places. So where it's not aligned, we have to go and supplement and find resources that hits the rigor of the standard. Also, we revised our math framework two years ago for the elementary, first year for secondary. And it's aligned to NCTM's best effective math teaching practices, but right now our resource is not aligned to that because our resource follow is very traditional, I do, we do, you do, versus our math framework is flipped to where students are doing the thinking and the talking and teachers are more the facilitators. And so it's just not aligned.
Mr. Vedanya?
I just want to say the same thing. We sit here and ask the teachers, what do you need to do your job? And they're telling us what they need to do their job and we're sitting up there arguing with them. I mean, I don't understand why we're arguing with them when they're telling us what they need to do their job and get the results for our students that we constantly ask for. So I mean, I don't understand.
Mr. Patton.
Thank you. So I'm listening to trustee Davis and Vedanya, and I appreciate what you guys are saying. Keith, I appreciate what you're saying as well. We redid the framework, the math framework, two years ago for elementary. We did the framework for secondary last year, correct? So you guys are putting your hands on the curriculum we're using now. Am I correct? So we have data that is showing where we, from, you've been here, Dina, six years. So we have data that we have been using this curriculum and we know where the holes are. We know that you guys are working to fix it. We don't know where the holes are in this new curriculum. We don't have the data for our district with this new curriculum, but we do have that data with what we're using right now that you guys are putting your hands on to make it work. Am I correct?
Correct. But when you look at historically, like our data is not, we're not improving, we're not where we need to be. And, and I would say with, regardless of whether we go with a new resource or not, like we were locked into a four-year contract now. That contract is ending, so regardless, we're going to have to get a new resource. And so.
My comment is.
So the same questions would arise.
My, my comment is, we have curriculum and instruction department that is leading the instruction and the curriculum for Waco ISD. And you guys know where the holes are in this current curriculum. And I have trust and faith that when there's a problem and when we see data, y'all are using, using active, active intervention to fix that. We have, all our teachers have been using, all our math teachers have been using this curriculum and know it. We have one high school that did not vote for this. I will come back to that over and over for you, Jeremy, for you, Jose, Keith, whoever, Bledsoe over there, whoever. We have one high school that absolutely did not go for this curriculum. We're talking, we, teachers know best. Yes, they do. We have a high school that said, this is not the best thing for our kids.
The overwhelmingly majority voted for it.
I just want to say, Ms. Sanders just told us that we, irregardless, will have to adopt a new resource because our contract is ending. So even if we keep the same resource, we will have to re-adopt it. And so we have an option to get a better resource and that is what they're bringing to us right now.
And so I was saying, like, even to go through this process again, you're not going to get a hundred percent of teachers on board with the resource. So again, the questions would arise again, like, there's never going to be a hundred percent.
And I, I would venture to say that the, the process that was put in place when Envision was adopted was probably not as thorough and as teacher represented as this one. I mean, because you're having people who said that they've been here for a while and that they've never been given this level of voice before.
And I can say that's something teachers would really valued in this process. So again, like our vote is not in, our count is not in, this is what our teachers want and I'm here to advocate for them.
What about our principals? Were our principals part of it? You guys are on board? Okay, I just want to make sure.
So, yeah, so thank you so much for that. I remember back 20 years ago, I was also involved in an adoption process where we got to look at all of our reading and our print, teachers got voice in it. So I think that has been, and we got to vote and we got to look at it and hold the materials and talk about it and get in our small groups and look at the horizontal and vertical alignment and all of that. So I, I do think if that has not been happening, that is a tragedy that I was not aware of.
I think we added a layer on this one because we added an extra process that typically isn't, which is that district level to where everything was just thoroughly looked at, vendors came in. A lot of times in the old, like textbook companies would call you, they would send you boxes of, of things, you would send them out to campuses, people would look at, you know, and that kind of thing. But you, going through that just heavy process here with the different representations, using the rubrics and then pushing that out and just, I don't know, I think it was more hands-on this, this, this time than what I've, I don't know, just maybe typically experienced. That district level though, that first level is something that sometimes, it's not a requirement. And so it's just something extra that we put in there so that we could also get into it and really look at it and then push out and.
Madam President?
Yes, Mr. Patton.
May I call the motion for a vote?
I would like to, I have one more thing.
It, so on this one, it's a little bit different. Usually the purchase part goes down in consent, but on this one, it is asking you to approve, the recommendation is to approve the selection of and purchase. So also asking to approve the purchase of the resource.
If trustee Ochoa has a comment or a question?
Yep.
I will yield to that afterwards. I would like to call the motion for a vote.
Well, first, I would like to say to Ms. Munoz and the other teachers who've joined us that, thank you. First of all, I can't imagine a worse way to spend your free time than poring over not just one curriculum, but lots of curriculum. I do want to add too, that I can, I can honestly say, I don't know that we've ever had a board that has fought more for teacher, for teachers being allowed more time, right? For, for a shortening of lesson plans. Keith thinks I'm getting political, so I am going to make a political statement. The state is pushing this curriculum really hard, it seems like, so much where they're paying an additional twenty dollars per student. In my opinion, you can look back through history and states, especially southern states, don't always tend to have our kids' best interests in mind. My opinion, every year, we send them with an opportunity to Austin to do something that's going to benefit our kids. Right? Here's an opportunity to fully fund public schools. Nope, not going to do it. Right? Here's an opportunity to make it a little more difficult for a kid to get his hands on a assault rifle. Nope, can't do that, people have rights. Here's an opportunity to expand Medicaid. Nope, not going to do that. And by the way, you're a socialist. I mean, I think, like, how many kids did we kick off the, the child health insurance program last year? Like two million kids, right? I mean, so, and now we have this modern day form of segregation in the form of school vouchers that's kind of gotten shoved down our throat. So for me, when a state lawmaker tells me that they've got the best interests of our students in mind, it's subject to proof, right? I mean, you have to show me because I'm not seeing it. That's the end of my rant, Keith. But I do want to say, if my wife was here at the podium, she would tell you, it takes me six months to pick out a pair of shoes that I like. And the reason is, is because I'm going to look up every pair of shoes in my size, what looks good, what doesn't look good. Because I like to make an informed decision. And I know, I, I really appreciate the amount of work that has gone into this, but, and I know it's not your fault because it rolled out so late. I feel like it would have been better for all of us if we had more time.
And you know the next one will be just the same.
I know that, but, but to me, and I know it just, we just see things from two different points of view. I, I feel more confident knowing what the problem is than, than purchasing something that no one can tell me is the solution, right? Only to find out later that we might have the same problems. If, if you could tell me this will fix everything that we are concerned with, it would not be an issue for me.
So this is what I'm going to say. I, I will never, ever, ever, ever sit up here and say that any one thing is going to fix all problems because you.
I get that, I get that. But I'm just saying, we don't have enough, there's been what, over 300 districts that have adopted this curriculum right throughout the state. And we've heard from Conley and East Central High School, and those aren't even official numbers, I mean, really, right? That, that's my concern.
What Ms. Sanders has, which I, if you want to send that to me, I can send it to Dr. Spicer, but that is a larger list. Now, that's at the, the one you were looking at for miss, or that Mrs. Flores shared, that was secondary. The list that Ms. Sanders has for elementary is a little bit more extensive.
Okay, but I mean, that's also, don't you feel like that should have been in the board packet? Like, I mean, I would have liked to have looked at this on, on Monday and, and.
They just provided this with this yesterday.
Yesterday.
They had to, did they get permission?
They had to talk to their legal system because it's dealing with other districts and their data, so it had to go through.
They shared overall like stats with us that they couldn't give us district names and all of those things until they.
We would have had, assuming it got sent out yesterday, we'd have less than 24 hours.
We had, you all would have. I mean, we had their stats that they had provided, but this is a list of district by district by district. And that's what at first that they had to get permission to share.
And let me also, I think, hopefully try to answer some of your questions too, Mr. Ochoa. One of the things I think I heard our staff say was, this would help with us in planning. This would help with having one source to go to get what they need and having to go and supplement, 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 supplement. So a lot of the things that we've heard, I'll say since I've arrived and some things that y'all brought forth to my attention and Dr. Cornblum's attention and just to leadership's attention, this is our effort to solve those things. My belief is this, because you have, I'll say, again, we don't have a hundred percent buy-in and you never will, right? But we have a high majority of our teachers saying, hey, this is what we need. And so my belief is this, if this is what our staff, our teachers, our principals saying, this is what we need, it's our job as leadership to say, okay, you said you wanted it, it's game time. This is the work. We know we have the last, I don't know how many years, been unsuccessful math and not making gains and sometimes regressing. We have to use this to make sure we meet the needs and the goals and the standards that we set for our team and then just keep working that system. But right now, what we currently have, it's not working, but this is a response to some of the needs that our teachers have said they've had in the classroom with the current model that we have now.
And I think we see with, with the change to accountability, that recent change too, that's, that's even exasperated the problems.
Thank you so much, Ms. Dr. Cornblum. Sorry, I have one question because now I'm, I feel like I'm hearing two different things. I, at first, the question was asked to you, what would the cost be if nothing was done? And I heard there would be no cost, we'd keep going, as is, so zero cost on that. And then when I heard from Ms. Sanders, am I saying it right, last name? Okay. She is saying that we're on a four-year renewal, so we'll have to renew. So that to me seems cost. So what, what are, what are we talking about? I feel a little confused.
There's, we have, at the end of this year, there's one more year of free workbooks with them.
Okay, okay, thank you. That is clarification because I was like.
Five twenty-six.
Next year, yeah.
Yeah, we would, we would finish, if, if y'all did not approve this recommendation, we would have to stay within one more year. We have to change next year regardless. We did not want to wait and hold kids behind one more year just because the adoption is next year, right? We were trying to get ahead of it now and get to work now because we know our kids and our teachers, our principals were saying, we need help now. And this was our response to that.
Wouldn't it be better to make a, a decision with the years, an extra year's worth of data?
Well, talking to the principals, they're saying that we've had all these years and we've done that making gains.
But we're talking to specific principals. And I, and I want to.
I mean, all the principals, no.
As I was saying, I'm, I'm not trying to argue with the teachers. I, God knows, the script thing, I had five preps my first year teaching and we used National Academy Foundation curriculum and it saved my life. I mean, I get that. I think that's important. And if that's important to you, then, then my thinking is, if we have been using the same curriculum for 11 years, then why can't we provide scripts to our teachers? We have 11 years of using the same curriculum. And I just don't understand why we can't do that. If we have a master teacher in first grade who teaches a great lesson, can we record her and then just hit print and do a transcript?
Okay, so I want, I'm going to tell you this. We, so we've had this discussion before on the reading side. We might, and we were going to work toward this, right? Looking at, trying to provide lesson plans. Remember how we talked about get our good teachers, provide the lesson plans? Okay, so that, that was something we were going to work on before we went into this. That still doesn't provide though, the pedagogy support and all of the other things that this does. And there's, we, we don't have the manpower to even begin to get that done. K, K-12. And we, you're talking about writing every word that someone's going to say, how it rolls out, every piece of the lesson. We, I mean, we're a mid-sized district with an elementary math person and a secondary math person. We just don't have the capacity to, to script lessons at that level. Providing lesson plans, you know, was something we were going to try to work toward, but that, I, I don't even know how we would accomplish that.
I've got some ideas.
Huh?
I've got some good ideas. Okay.
Okay, Mr. Patton called to vote, so he, he first. Can you read the motion that you are wanting?
We, we make our vote whether we approve, we go with admin presentation for accepting blue bonnet curriculum, both elementary and secondary. That's.
Can we read it? Can we read it out of the board back here?
Yeah, so I'll entertain a motion, recommendation for the board to approve the adoption and purchase of the Great Minds Blue Bonnet for grades K through five, and Carnegie for grades six through eight, Algebra I and II, geometry as a primary math instructional resource for the district.
Second.
Great. So, Mr. Patton, did you vote for one? Did you make your motion? Okay, so Mr. Davis, thank you. Do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mr. Guillory. Is there any further discussion, Mr. Bledsoe?
No.
Any further discussion, Mr. Davis?
No.
Any further discussion, Mr. Vedanya?
Just the same thing, we got to give the teachers what they're requesting.
Any further discussion, Mr. Guillory?
Yes, I request a roll call vote.
Great. Thank you. Any further discussion, Mr. Ochoa?
No.
Any further discussion, Mr. Patton?
No, ma'am.
Great. We will do roll call. Renee, I think you'll count us out.
No.
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, no.
Yes.
No.
No.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. Okay, moving on to consent agenda. Item number nine, consider take appropriate action. I have a request for item, oh, I wrote it somewhere here. Nine, gee, thank you so much, teachers and everyone. Thank you. I have a request for item, oh, I wrote it somewhere here. Nine G, thank you so much, teachers and everyone, thank you. I have a request for item nine G, so I will entertain a motion to accept consent agenda as presented except for nine G.
I move.
Thank you, Mr. Patton. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Vedanya. Is there any questions, Mr. Bledsoe?
No.
Any questions, Mr. Davis?
No.
Any questions, Mr. Vedanya? Any questions, Mr. Guillory?
No.
Any questions, Mr. Ochoa?
No.
Any questions, Mr. Patton?
No, ma'am.
Okay, uh, wait, did I call the motion in a second? Uh, shoot, did I call the motion? Yes, second, thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, passes. With item nine G, resolution regarding Edward Bryan Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program, I will entertain a motion to accept it. Thank you, Mr. Davis. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Ochoa. Is there any discussion on that item? Mr. Bledsoe?
No.
Any discussion? Mr. Davis? Any discussion, Mr. Vedanya? Mr. Guillory is recusing himself. Look at it, Renee. Any questions, Mr. Ochoa?
No.
Any questions, Mr. Patton?
No, ma'am.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, except for Mr. Guillory, who is recusing. Passes unanimous, not unanimously, six. Thank you. Sorry about that. Okay, what we have all been waiting for, with bated breath, review and discuss budget update. Cheryl Davis, give us all the flowery news we want to hear.
You all don't blame me for the bad news, okay? It's not me. Okay, we're going to start out tonight, I just want to update the current year projections just a little bit because we have the fifth, six weeks numbers in here, and it looks pretty much like it did last time. Again, we are looking at about a seven and a half million dollar deficit in the current year. The adopted budget was eight million dollar deficit, but we have amended in a number of things that we've talked about before. We had some rollover of some purchases, some projects that hadn't completed, like buses and things like that. So we really have, as you can see, our revised budget is 14.8 million dollar deficit, we're underspending that by about half. So in pretty good shape as far as that goes. Again, our last time, I think we talked at the end of fourth, six weeks, our ADA was up two, it's now up 28, so we did pick up a few students there. We talked a little bit, one thing I wanted to talk about right there, our property value study. We do have an appeal out on that. We talked about that last time as well, that we got notice that the, there was an error in the reporting from the appraisal district again, so we filed an appeal. We have not heard information that has to do with that freeze and the compression of the over 65 homesteads. When we look actually at the revenue on where we have generated additional revenues, you see that we had just generated an extra 1.6 million in the foundation school program. A lot of that is in that homestead exemption because they really didn't know what that was going to be when we were calculating our revenues last year. We didn't know what the impact of that was going to be. So a lot of that is in the hold harmless for the homestead exemption. And then the other big chunk of revenue that we generated was $2 million in investment income. Again, we were being told that the interest rates were going to be going down significantly. They have not as of this point. I think we are running about 4.4% on CDs at the beginning of the year, and it's like 4.25 right now, so really not a big change in the interest rates. I did want to show you this, though, because this is our foundation school program, our tier one revenues. So there is a bit of concern here because you see, our revenues as far as our regular ed allotment are down. We're down about a million three in regular ed. We are up 2 million, 2.1 million in special ed because we do have more identified students in special ed. Compensatory education, this is a change with our new tiers that we got. The district's a little richer as far as the tiers are concerned, so we're losing about $484,000 there. Our career in technology is up about half a million dollars. And then our early education, we had, we do have fewer kids in ADA in those first, early education has been kinder through third grade. So we have fewer kids in there, so we've lost about 137,000 there. And then our other programs, which is partially that hold harmless I was talking about, is up a million eight. But because special ed is up, the counts are up, and that we're getting that additional revenue, we will have to commit probably another million dollars worth of resources to special ed in this coming year. So even if we're not getting new money overall, we'll have to make a commitment probably to special ed. And there is, as we talk through some of the bills, there is some funding for special ed. Not that we know what that is yet, but there is going to be some funding for special education.
Wasn't that being discussed today at the Senate Public Ed Committee for Special Ed?
We know the first year is like $1,000 were for each evaluation.
Yeah.
They're, they're going to.
Block, I mean, chunks.
These intensity, it's going to be funded based on intensity of program, which.
It's different amounts for different.
Right, different amounts for different children, okay.
Which we have now. We actually have instructional arrangements, get different weights for funding right now, but this is an intensity model, which I don't really know what that looks like yet, and they're going to take a year, I think, to develop that. Okay, so one of the reasons we, again, this is our preliminary estimates of our ADA. We talked about that last time. I have not changed the enrollment projection. It's consistent with what the demographer was projecting, but I'm looking at an enrollment of 11,526 compared to 11,673 in the current year. So that's kind of what I'm basing our budget on for next year. Local property values and projected tax rates, one of the reasons we have to have this meeting because under the law, I have to, we get our preliminary values on April 30th for our local values, and we do need to have a discussion with you all about those local values within 120 days of adopting the budget. The actual reason for that has, is, has gone away because the reason we originally had to have this was because there was a year lag in the values that were used for the, for calculating your state revenue. That's no longer the case, but this is still in the law, so we have to do this. We have, we will have to estimate those CPTD values that we just talked about. This is what it looks like right now. Our net taxable values that we received as our preliminary values are $10.2 billion. That is up from 9.8 billion for preliminary values last year, using, you'll see a little bit different pattern because that, those preliminary values turned into 9.2 for certified values last year. I'm making them 9.4 and bringing them down a little bit more this year because there is going to be an increase in the homestead exemption. So I used the percentage, the 9.01% that you saw in 2023 when they increased the homestead exemption that year. We know the last few years, this has been problematical for us in trying to estimate because we're not getting good numbers when they're making adjustments this late in the year. Our tax offices, our appraisal districts are not really able to reprogram to that. You think maybe by this time they'd be able to, but I am right now using that 9.01% for what I'm projecting for our certified values. Homestead exemption, I have questions there. I think it's 40,000. It's going to increase from 100,000 to 140,000. That's what's in the bills right now that I think will most likely go forward. I did want to make one comment on that, on the certified values. As you can see down there, I had, when we did the five-year projection last year for our strategic planning that we were doing, I thought we would go into recapture this coming year. Earlier, when I presented in February, I did not think we were going to go into recapture because the appraisal district was telling me that the values were going to be very flat. As you can see, they were not flat, so they did go up. I do think we, it's very possible with our student population going down and our values going up, we will be in recapture next year. And at this point in time, early calculations, because I don't have a template, I can't really calculate everything, it looks like about $272,000 we'll have to send back to the state. So, looking at this, again, we still, because we don't have a bill yet for state funding, some of these I'm having to use last year's rates on just to give you what it looks like the tax rates could be at this point, but using those values and using the same compressed tax rate that we had last year, that will change based on the bill. It would take us down to a total M and O rate of 75.92 cents. We would need a INS rate on those values of 24.35%. I got a note here on that as well. One of the other things that's changing in the bills is the hold harmless. If they do away with a hold harmless for debt service that they have had, now, there's been several versions of that, some of the original versions were very hurtful, they put some back in, so I don't know exactly where that's going to be yet. If they do away with a hold harmless, we'd have to increase that by 2.8 cents because of what we're getting right now. But if they don't, if we get a hold harmless of similar amount, we would be, our total tax rate would be right at a dollar. I have that comparison on this following page of what that looks like compared to the current year. This current year where the total tax rate is a dollar four eight nine four, so we would be just over a dollar for next year. Again, this is very preliminary, a lot of it depends on what gets passed in the legislature and what our final certified values end up to be. So, we talked about cost increases. I'm continuing to work on those. I finished up with utilities and substitute costs and all this week, so we're still looking at that and seeing where we can cut some things, where we can save some money on those things, but we do know that we've got, of course, some increases. I think the good news is that with our tax collection fees and some of those, I don't think we're going to have to have an increase in the budget for next year from what we're looking at right now. Okay, let's talk a little bit about what's in the session. I kind of have have cleaned this up from what I had last time, or what was in your packets, your board packets. I took out some of the bills because we're going to talk about House Bill Two and these bills associated with that in a minute. Some of this is updated a little bit as far as I could get. It's kind of hard to know where we are in some of these things. Safety allotment, it does look like we should double our safety allotment with the legislation. I think they're going with Senate Bill 260, although I heard something the opposite earlier today, so I'm not quite sure, but we should get about another half million dollars in the safety allotment. One of the things that was said in the hearings today was that that money could be used for districts. We did, when we got the increase in the safety allotment before a half million dollars, we spent over a million dollars. So we don't have, we're already spending what we need to spend for safety allotment, so this money, some of this could be used for safety, but some of it could also be used to reimburse us for what we've been spending already. On the SB Two, has already passed and been signed by the governor, that's vouchers. And then we have the virtual education bill has already been signed by the governor. And then the teacher scholarships incentives, that's still outstanding, as well as the property tax legislation hasn't gone through yet, so we're still watching that. But we kind of know basically what they're probably going to be doing with that. Like I said, there's going to more than likely be an increase in the homestead exemption. We are also watching some of the bills that are related to debt service. There is some language. We think that Senate Bill 19, that was, House Bill 19, was going to be very restrictive to us on debt service because one of the things that it was going to do was limit our tax rate for debt to 20% of the total tax rate. We're already at 26%. So we would already be in violation of that bill, only two districts in the state are not. So, anyway, and I think that's Houston and maybe Dallas, two of the really big ones. Okay, so, let's look a little bit real quick at at the committee substitute for House Bill Two and what it looks like at this point in time. Article One deals with teacher compensation. This is 4.2 billion dollars is being put into this. It provides, what they keep calling a permanent across-the-board pay increase for teachers with at least three years of experience. Teachers below three years, we're not going to get funding for. And so teachers, we are in an enrollment, of course, of over 5,000, so teachers with three or four years of experience would get $2,500, and then teachers with five or more years of experience would get $5,500. Again, this should generate, I ran from our PMS in the fall, this would generate about $4,877,000 for the district. We would have about 200,000, maybe if we did a smaller pay raise, let's say 1,500 for our teachers from zero through two years, that could cost about a couple hundred thousand, I think it's up 206,000. But this does not cover benefits. So the benefits on this salary increase would be 750,000 that the district will have to cover, that we have to absorb. That's the TRS and workers' comp and unemployment and Medicare for us.
And right now, there's nothing attached to that House Bill that will.
This has to go into salary. Their salaries have to be this much higher than they were in the current year.
Right. I was hoping you had a different answer than what I thought that I had studied on.
Yeah, so, in 2019, HB Three, that year, we were able to, it was for compensation, and we were able to use part of that money to also cover the benefits.
For the TRS, yeah.
That we cannot. So that is, you know, one of the issues that we have with that. It also provides for an increase in the teacher incentive allotment, adds a fourth designation and increases the floor and ceiling on those pay raises, gives free pre-K for teachers, liability insurance for teachers is in there. So some of the questions that we did have was, again, stipend, there's, because it says it's a permanent increase for salaries, but it also has to be re-appropriated every two years. It's not ongoing appropriation like if you have an increase in basic allotment. So there's a lot of districts concerned about giving this as a increase on the salary schedule, and some are talking about maybe as a stipend because if the legislature wants not to appropriate that money, you know, it wouldn't be built into the salary.
So when we do a stipend, are we giving TRS benefits to that?
That stipends, unless they're a retention bonus, which I don't think in this case, because of the way it's worded, it would be called, even though this is actually referred to as a retention allotment.
Right.
By the state, I think if it's going, they are expecting it to be eligible for TRS. If that's the case, we would give it just as a supplemental salary.
Supplemental salary.
Because most of our stipends that we give are eligible for TRS.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Davis, are there strings attached to this money? Wasn't there a House Bill that eliminated non-certified teachers from campuses?
Eventually, yes. And it may be actually in this educator prep one, that it, there's a couple of other ones that will, let me see, there's one other one, no, it might be in that one, that it does, I think you have till 2030, I believe, before you have to have all your teachers certified. Yeah. Yeah. It's too shady.
It's a lot.
Okay, so, the second one is educator prep program. And so, this is part of what they're seeing, that they're putting a lot of money into. They're putting .3 billion into this program, so, and these are very helpful. And I don't in any way want to say that, you know, getting $4 million for teacher salaries is a bad thing, because it's fantastic, we desperately need to increase our teacher salaries to be competitive. So, you know, I don't want to say that at all. That is, I'm just happy they put that $4 million in, for us into that, but from 2019 to now, we talked about it in February, we've had a 22.5% inflation. So, that would be 15 million for us, not 4 million. And something that was said in the hearings today, they don't really need to fund inflation. Something was said about, because we, because the richer districts, districts that have good prop, because, you know, the rural districts can't generate revenues because they have low property values, they can't get the tax collections. But how many times have I shown you guys that chart that says, what does it say with the little seesaw? When local revenues go up, state revenues go down, right? So, we don't keep that money. So, it's one thing to say, you know, you've got all, we've got higher values, so we'll get more tax revenue, but that benefits the state, not us, because they keep that money then. So, as I told you, I was listening to the hearings today and I had to shut the door to my office, because I didn't want my staff to hear my comments.
Ms. Davis, I wish you would have told me that last week, because I intentionally didn't protest my property taxes this year, just so that Waco ISD would get a little bit more in revenue, but apparently that's not the case.
We don't get to keep it, the state will keep that. Okay, so, anyway, the educated, the educator prep program, it is the one that phases out uncertified teachers and under, because we had those District of Innovation waivers, and those will go away, there will be some that will allow them, and it, yes, it will end by 2030 is the expectation. And then districts can't waive duty, will have to notify parents if the teacher's not appropriately certified, and then there will be available 3,000 per new teacher for job ment, on the job mentorship. The third, 2B, is the Educator Bill of Rights, so there are going to be grants for rehire retired teachers. If you don't realize it, we pay a very hefty premium to TRS when we hire retired teachers. It's actually, our regular TRS is about 7.5%, we have to pay both sides of it for retired teachers, so we have about a 13% penalty, if you will, for TRS if we, when we hire retired teachers. So, there's supposed to be a grant that may help us with that. And then there's some other things about exam fees that will help us in getting some of our bilingual teachers and special ed teachers that are very hard to get, having those fees waived. Special education, this is one we're talking about, 1.3 billion in special ed. There's a new model for special education funding, changes to innovative intensity of services model. It'll be in the second year of the biennium, we won't see that in this coming year, but we will see the evaluation reimbursement for $1,000 per evaluation of new state funding for special education. For the, this biennium only, it won't continue, there will be an additional reimbursement if we do evaluations as requested by homeschool or private school students. Now, that's the law now. We actually do have to do those evaluations now for homeschool and private school teachers, students, so it's not really, we'll get funding for it, but we are actually currently doing it. On the early learning reforms, there are going to be targeted investment screeners, requires interventions and all for literacy and numeracy. They are going to invest in math academies, I think the last time they did reading academies, and now this time we're going to invest in math academies. Career and technical education, not a lot of extra money here, really, it's .2 billion. A lot of that is actually, one of the things that they have changed is our new instructional facilities allotment, which we are getting right now for Waco High and Kendrick for startup costs. They are actually going to include renovations and construction for CTE facilities that haven't been included in that funding before. And then they're going to improve the funding for the Rural Pathways Program, and we do have a P-Tech program, so we'll get a little bit of extra money there. It currently pays $25 a student, so doesn't really fund the program. Okay, so here is the additional school finance reforms. Increases the basic allotment by $55, but it is not new money, it is existing money, and it's going to be paid for through the golden penny yield reforms. So, the, without new law, the only new money Waco ISD was getting this year was through the golden penny yield reforms. So, not all districts get golden penny yield. This is the tier-two funding, which is the golden copper pennies, is what is known as Robin Hood. It was put in place for property poor districts. So, not all districts get tier-two funding. Not all districts went out and sold their voters on a tax ratification election to get those golden pennies increased. We went out in 2015, we sold a tax ratification election, and we generated 13 cents of increased tax rate, so we could leverage these funds. That is now the money they are going to use to fund the $55 basic allotment, is that additional money we were getting on those golden pennies. So, it's not money we have now, it was going to be new money for us, but with the, when they take away it, that money from this pot of districts that has it, to fund the $55 for this pot of districts, well, guess what happens? We get less than we had before. So, quick and dirty calculation, we'll lose $448,000 instead of gaining on the increase in the basic allotment. Again, I talked about the school safety allotment going up, there is an increase in the charter facilities funding by 255 million. Of course, we don't get any of that. There's an increase in the small and mid-sized district allotment, which we don't qualify for. It allot's 42 million for regional variations in insurance costs, and even though we looked in February at how much our insurance costs had gone up, I think our property insurance went up about a million dollars last year, not because of necessarily what's happening in Waco, but what's happening throughout the state, we don't qualify for this. Most of the districts that qualify are those along the coast. And then it adds another 300 million, this, we don't really know what this is yet, but it's for miscellaneous adjustments and tier-two impacts. So, depending on what, I think that's going to help fund the hold harmless that might be needed, but again, we don't, I had hoped to be able to at least bring some kind of preliminary calculation, we don't have enough information as of today. I kept this from going out till about 4 o'clock this afternoon, hoping we'd get some information, but we didn't really get any more information on it.
Ms. Davis, hey, just going, thinking back a couple of slides, if the pay raises go in as, as what the House bill is looking at right now, have you calculated what the impact of that would be for our TRS that will be coming from us? Have you, have you, like, broad, broad brushed that?
That 748,000, that includes the TRS that we have to pay out.
Okay.
Because that is all over stat men. Because, so the way TRS works, the state pays TRS for our employees that are not subject to statutory minimum, which would be custodians, some people, you know...
TRS.
Non-certified people.
Yes, ma'am.
So, then we have to pay TRS on certified staff that are subject to stat men when they go above the statutory minimum amount. Well, all of this, since we pay above statutory minimum, all of this salary increase will be above statutory minimum, so the state will not be picking up any of the...
And we will.
We'll have to pay all of it.
I'm sorry, I meant to ask that a few minutes ago, and nature was calling, I've only gone through like five bottles of water.
Anyway, so that's kind of, that's not, part of that 750, most of that 750,000 is TRS.
It will be TRS, all right, thank you. Sorry for the interruption.
Again, there's just lots of questions, we haven't seen the actual, we see, we have now seen the bill language, we got that sometime earlier today, but we don't really see how that's necessarily going to be run through formulas or anything yet. We don't know about hold harmless adjustments, because we have, we have had up through this past year, three levels of hold harmless in our general fund for each of those homestead exemptions that have occurred over the last few years. So, they were talking about maybe there would be a fourth level, but I think they took it out and were going to redo it. And then, again, the teacher increase is described as permanent, but the funding's not really permanent, it has to be re-appropriated every biennium, and then we already know the answer, as of today, we can't cover the benefit impact, it's got to be an actual salary increase. We don't know what those miscellaneous adjustments include, and there are some specific changes that we don't exactly know the timelines on either. Again, the Senate hearings were today. This is kind of the important dates that are left. Ends, the session ends June 2nd, so we expect that we will know something definitive by June 2nd, because as they were talking about, there is really no appetite for them to go into special session about school funding, so they want a decision to be made by June 2nd, whatever that might be. From what I have heard, what we're hearing from consultants is, this is probably what it's going to be. So, we're, we don't, we are not really getting anything to help with our deficit situation for, that we are currently, and again, we're underspending that by quite a bit. You know, we had some revenues, but there's still some question about Medicaid and the CHARS program, we had big cuts to CHARS last year, but we still are generating a million six in CHARS this year, and if that gets cut at the federal level, we could lose that funding. But, and, you know, Chairman Powell has said he's going to stay firm with interest rates, so maybe we'll have that for a little bit longer, but it's just kind of really hard to know what we're, where we're going to be at with revenues. I will say, though, going through and projecting expenditures this last week, projecting ADA and enrollments, it was so nice to see some stability after the last four years, to see actually some pattern stabilizing like they used to, where you could actually do some projections. COVID just made it so difficult to do that, and I do see a lot of stabilizing with our expenditures and our attendance and enrollments now, so, even if they're still slightly going down, or at least not quite at the rate that they were for a while.
Another question, knowing that all this crap is up in the air right now, are, when you're making your budget, are you, are you having to make two budgets for next year?
No, I haven't made one yet. I mean, we talked about it, and one of the things I told Dr. Spicer when she, she came in to this situation that we have with a large deficit, not knowing programs, not knowing staff, not knowing necessarily what she wanted to do, and last year, we thought we might have a deficit last year, but because of the way we were able to utilize, I started to say manipulate, the way we were able to utilize those ESTR funds at the end of the year, we did not end up with a deficit last year, we actually ended up putting $7 million into the fund balance at the end of last year. That's a $7 million we're going to be using probably in this year to cover this budget. So, we're kind of at a break even of where we were at the beginning of last year. We can do that for a year or so, because we do have a very healthy fund balance. This bill, though, is for a biennium, and maybe longer, because one of the things that was said by one of the consultants yesterday is, they usually don't do this every biennium, they usually do it every other biennium on school funding. I would say that they didn't do what they were supposed to do last biennium, so we should have two in a row. We, I am cutting supplies and materials again, that will get us, you know, half a million dollars maybe, because I don't want to cut campuses where they can't really still do some of the things they want to do. I'm going to cut about half a million dollars out of that. We have closed Alta Vista, so we do know we're probably going to get about 600,000 in the fixed cost out of Alta Vista, depending, we talked about the transformation grant, if that goes away, that's another 700,000. So, we can easily, I think, I think we can easily get a couple million out of the budget. We talked about maybe freezing positions and looking at that for now, but, and we don't have, this, it has leveled off, because we did budget quite a bit last year, because the inflation rate had been so high, so we did budget a little bit higher, and that's why I think we're not seeing that, the need for the increases in this year for like tax collection fees and some of that. But we are going to, again, have to adopt a budget with a deficit, and we're going to have to put a plan together to start addressing that. We've kind of put that off, I think with ESTR funds, with some of the other things, we've kind of put it off, but we're not going to have a choice, we're going to have to do something.
I just want to say publicly how much I appreciate your wisdom and your frugality, I guess is the word. I was speaking with someone today and who knows you, and we both joked that the first thing out of your mouth is no. And that makes you a good, it makes you a great CFO.
A great CFO.
Come and ask for something, and the first word is no.
Cheryl, I'm going to say, I didn't appreciate that at all when I was teaching, but up here I can.
See, I told, I just said earlier tonight, I'm going to give a class on how to say no, because we're going to have to be doing a lot more of that in the next year.
I remember coming to you as a principal and begging, and the first word out of your mouth was no. But you always found a way to help, and your ability and your expertise is going to help us get through these murky days ahead, so thank you.
Well, it helps if you have a plan, that's what people always say, they tell other, when other administrators come on board, they'll tell them, we always have a plan. Don't ever go and ask her for money without having a plan, so you have to have a plan. But right now, not even, and we just don't have a plan, so we're going to have to come up with one. We'll survive. It's going to be rough, and, you know, I have, as you know, I have a daughter who's a fine arts teacher, I told her today, I said, well, you're not going to be able to do that trip next year. And I said, well, if fine arts even exists next year, so, she didn't appreciate that.
Well, Ms. Davis, thank you so much for all the cheery news. But I do appreciate your, what Jim said, your frugality and the way that you have led this district with the finances and so many variables and unknowns. this district with the finances and so many variables and unknowns. Thank you, moving on to, moving on to item number 11, where you discuss Waco High School construction project and occupancy plan, this is exciting, Ms. Barreda.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, and Dr. Spicer. You know, about three years ago, the board approved GMP number one for Waco High School, and we started on this adventure. In September 2022, was GMP number two, and we really committed to the adventure. It's, it's, we've got a lot of exciting stuff to show you today, and I wanted to just introduce real quick, you know Andrew Faust, he's a regular around here, also, of course, our project architect with O'Connell Robertson, Isaiah Unruh with Rogers O'Brien, he's our project manager on site, and John Egling, also with Rogers O'Brien. So I'm going to, without much, oh, I also wanted to just give a shout out to Hope, she was here for a while, and she's been very dedicated on the Waco ISD side to this project, and Kevin Hayford as well. So unfortunately, they weren't able to be here tonight, so. Alright, Andrew.
Good evening, everyone, thank you so much again for having us here, hopefully we can bring a little lightness to the meeting here as we move forward. So we're here to present Waco High School, as you likely know, we are on the brink of delivering this amazing building to y'all, so you can use it here next fall. So to start off, I wanted to, oh, I guess this slide got broken, but it was a time lapse taking us through from where we started with, you know, the old Waco High School and nothing on the site, you know, removing 42nd Street and taking over the Lake, the Lake River Little League fields, and then, you know, seeing the construction kind of progress through. This end slide doesn't really show you much, but it does show you what will be taken over. So basically what is showing in the plan here is the, where the existing school is, which we will then be taking over as y'all move into the new Waco High School, and then we'll be completing all the site build out, which includes the parent drop off loop, the staff parking lot, the tennis courts, and three practice fields, as well as other field events, and other kind of support spaces there. So moving in here, basically, we're just going to show you a bunch of really pretty pictures of the new school, so we do encourage y'all to come out and visit us if you do want to have a tour, but I'm sure we'll have a grand opening here soon as well. The first slide here shows the new front entry, which I just actually really love this, because if you saw two slides ago, the rendering that you all have seen for the past few years, this is just kind of a exact replica of, of that, so it's really cool to see this design come to life and this new building here taking shape. So on the upper right picture, you have the exterior courtyard, which is all behind the secure perimeter, and that middle picture on the right shows the student entry and the, the grass band practice field, and then you see a view of the two-story classroom and right along New Road, so if you have driven by, yeah, I'm sure you've seen all of that. Next, we'll take you inside the building, here's the front entrance, as you walk in that front door, that large picture on the left shows you Lion's Way, that's kind of that main street that cuts directly through the center of the campus, you have your admin on the left and your two-story classrooming on the right there, and then the second, the upper right picture shows our coffee kiosk, which is kind of situated right in the center of the campus, that's for students and staff, whoever enjoys caffeinated beverages can, you know, stop on by and grab a treat there, and I mean, it looks like a little mini Starbucks, so it's a really cool space. And then the lower right picture would be also right in that main dining commons is our monumental cast-in-place concrete stair, it's, the picture doesn't really do it justice, if you go there in person, it's a really cool sight to behold. Next, we're going to just take you through some of the different spaces that we're offering in the school. Here is our library, as you can see, we're already starting to bring furniture in, you got your library stacks, they're ready for all the amazing books that they're going to offer here. You have your circulation desk on the middle picture on the right, on the upper right, that's still in your dining commons, it's called the library porch, so an area that's going to have some seating and area for students to bring books out and read, and also do homework, and also dine. On the lower right, if you go out those doors in the back of the library, you gain access to that amazing courtyard, so you can sit out there, pick your favorite book, and cozy up to a nice, a nice spot there. Next up, for all you athletic enthusiasts, our new gymnasium that has seating capacity for about 2,000, beautiful floors, beautiful new grandstands, everything is just amazing, so.
Is this the one we toured when we were there, that they were just putting the floor in?
I think so, yeah, yeah, they just put the flooring, and this is the, the main gym, there is also an auxiliary gym as well, but this is going to be your main competition gym. Next up, we have our classroom neighborhoods, so the largest image is showing your teacher think tank, which is where all the teachers would have their desks and would be, have a space to collaborate, also a little kitchenette inside. The upper right picture shows you a view inside of one of those think tanks, as you can see, the desks are already there with chairs and all, and all the things the teachers are going to need. The lower right kind of shows you one of the typical classrooms with some of the furniture starting to go in there, there will be more. Next up, we have theater and black box, this is a view from standing on the stage out into our 600-seat auditorium, you got that lion pride red seats staring at you, and then all the beautiful finishes in this space, it's, it's really a sight to behold. The upper right picture shows the black box theater, which is another alternate performance space that can be utilized for smaller venue performances.
I think the, the wood walls, one of my favorite things in, in this auditorium, it's so striking.
And it's actually just wood flooring that we just put on the walls, and it just looks amazing.
Y'all want to come replace my wood floors?
For sure, yeah, I'll talk to Isaiah, he's the, he's the builder guy, I just dreamed the vision, so. Here's band choir and art with the lower left, the large image here is your new band hall, a lot of space there for lots of music to happen, also includes a overhead door here to bring in large instruments, and it has direct access to the band practice field adjacent to it. You have your choir, which is down the hall, another great space, both spaces have a lot of natural light coming in. Lower right shows you a visual arts lab, and those also have a lot of natural light coming in, you can see it's kind of a studio themed space, so it kind of has the exposed structure and, and just kind of the cool concrete floors, also with direct access to that main courtyard, so students can go out there, paint, sculpt, you know, take an inspiration from, from that surrounding.
I have a question, on the last slide, where, where's the practice field in relation to that?
The grass practice field is right along New Road, New Road and kind of Trice, basically, behind, there's a detention pond there.
Okay, I was going to say, because, yeah, what I remember is that detention pond there, but.
Yes, so right behind that would be your grass practice field, yep.
I have a question, looking at the, the band hall with the sound muffling, are we going to have those sound dampening things on the walls going down Lion's Way?
Not down Lion's Way, actually Lion's Way offers an acoustical deck product, so it has a lot of little holes in it, that really helps with.
The sound.
The sound, yep.
Thanks.
For sure. Next up is CTE, that large image is your culinary lab, so that's the more commercial-grade kitchen. You can see this also as you're walking through the quarters, you can't see off the right, or sorry, the left side of that image, there's a large window, so as you're walking down the corridor, you can pop in or peek in and see all the cooking that's going on there. The lower right image is going to be your culinary kitchen, so the more residential grade kitchen, it's got six different workstations with all kind of residential appliances there. The upper right is an image of your autotech classroom, so that's six bays, they're going to have lifts, it's full stuff now, but we're, we're getting ready to, to turn that over as well. We're even talking through getting cars delivered into there and other stuff for the, the new students coming in next year. And with that, I will turn it over to Isaiah.
Yeah, so kind of as a summary of where we're at, about 92% complete with the project overall, so that's basically, we've got till January of next year to finish out this next phase, so that's, once school's out, mad dash to get all the stuff out of the old building, moved over or, you know, taken wherever it's going, and then demolishing that, getting the additional practice fields and parking and other drive lanes out on that side, so, but basically at, right at substantial completion for the building, we're just finishing touches right now, working through punch lists, getting all those little final touches wrapped up. So as you saw, furniture going in, been a lot of movement on that already, and tracking well to finish by the end of May on schedule. Technology also is going in, we've been working with district technology on the stuff that they're doing, as well as what we're installing, so good progress there, there'll be a little bit of salvage on their end as well from the old building, but plenty of time to get that up and running before the fall semester. And speaking of coming out of the new building, as the packing materials are delivered to the old campus, so teachers are able to do that packing, get a head start on that, so that when school's out, that the movers will move over, heading on the 30th. And so currently with permit-wise, we've got a stocking TCO for the whole building, which means we can load the, load the space, and we're days away from a TCO for occupancy, staff actually being able to move in there. Plenty of time over the summer to move in, not scrambling to try to get there before the school year, so, great achievement.
I have a question.
Mr. Cha.
As it relates to, to moving, I was talking to some teachers at Waco High, does everyone have adequate bins or whatever we're providing them to, to move their classroom? There was some confusion from them on what was going to be supplied and, and when it was going to be available. Okay. Okay, good deal. And then, can we go back to the slide with the staircase and the concrete masterpiece? Oh, there we go. So my question, I guess this is for Dr. Spicer, are we allowing Mr. Ray and his staff to go in and, and walk up? My, my thought is, during a passing period, going into a full cafeteria, it's just going to be a lot of chaos, and I think the more time we can provide them to walk that and, and see any potential bottlenecks, the, the better off we'll be, rather than doing it, you know, closer to the start of school.
Yes, they have had, they have many already going into the schools, we've been talking about labeling, classrooms, who goes where, all that, good stuff, so they've been doing that. So I've opened a new school as a high school principal, and so we do provide that time, we have some trainings as well about how to use a flexible space, because sometimes you go into a new, I'll say, modern facility, and you might want to practice, I'll say, previous habits, but we have a new system, new opportunities, so we're going to have training for him and his staff to make sure they have access and opportunity to make sure we're successful for next year.
Just to add to that, part, there'll be a little less chaos there, because part of the design includes the main kitchen area, which is right there, but also includes two distributed serving within the classroom neighborhoods, so it's really going to pull some of that population outside of that main area and offering dining areas in those other portions of the building as well. So it'll decrease the chaos slightly there in that main, in that main circulation area.
Is that, that going to require additional staff to, to main this?
It's a total of six serving lines, so four at the main kitchen and two distributed, so then, yeah, and each place would offer a different kind of food offering, I believe.
I'm thinking of those like coffee areas that are non-existent, obviously, right now in current school.
So it's a big job, this moving out of a school we've been living in for 50-something years almost, maybe more. We've got a lot of things coming up, and one of the things we learned from our last two occupancies was we wanted to do a better job of getting things out of the building so that we had a chance for more, I mean, we salvaged a lot, but there was just a lot left over, so we're having an auction, an online auction for the contents of Waco High School. Once we have moved everything out that's going either to the new school, or that is going to another place in Waco ISD, another campus within Waco ISD. One example of this is the weight room at the existing high school, they're getting all new weights in the new school, so those weights are being taken from Waco High School to University High School predominantly, with a small portion of them going to Waco ISD PD at the request of Chief Goodman, for the officer fitness program, I suppose. So we're really using everything and nothing's, we're trying really hard to make sure we use everything that's reusable. And the online auction's going to start 5:27 and run through 6:02, and then they have to have everything out by 6:06, people have to come get their stuff and get it out of the building. Another thing that's happening is the salvage of HVAC equipment and technology equipment. Just a couple of years ago, we replaced rooftop units on that CTE wing, and so we're taking those rooftop units off, and we're going to use them other places in Waco ISD, those were provided with ESTR funds, they were failing, we had to replace them, they weren't working anymore, but we'll be able to salvage those. Autotech equipment is also being reused and salvaged, and what we aren't using at the new Waco High School is going over to University, and we'll be replacing their equipment because it's an upgrade for them. So that, Ms. Saxinian has been critical in getting that done. We've got a bunch of historical items we're relocating, including the granite ram from the Richfield Rams, and the lion that's in the entryway there, and poor lion, he needs some, he needs some attention, so we're going to get him doctored up and get his ears fixed and no more holes, and try to get him looked a little better. And just, there's just, there's also a time capsule, which is going to be pretty cool, we're having, Rogers O'Brien's going to excavate that for us, and we're going to hold it over at the maintenance office and not open it until the dedication, I assume in the fall, that would be the time we would do that. People are real excited about opening that time capsule, it was placed there in 1986, so I think that'll, a lot of people are very interested in that. And then the painting of murals, that's a really exciting thing, we'll start the week of June 2nd, and the mural artists are Mr. Will Suarez and also Mr. Vincent Thomas, both local Waco artists, and they have been working with the historical committee to develop these beautiful murals that will basically try to convey the richness of the heritage of the Waco High School, all of the high schools combined. So anyway, that's, that's where we are. Packing is ongoing, and I think it probably will be till, till the last minute, just because it's a big job, and we've told everybody that it's going to be out of here by 5:23, or, you know, the auction or the bulldozers are going to get it, so. So we're providing lots of support to the campus, and, and we have had lots of opportunities for the campus to visit and to walk through, we've scheduled many, many walkthroughs, specific walkthroughs with user groups like the fine arts team, or the CTE team, or the culinary team, so we've really tried to do that, but nothing's going to take the place of actually being there for them, and we know that. Another thing that we're working on, just one more quick thing, with O'Connell Robertson is a teacher guide, that is a document that will be provided to the teachers that will show them, I mean, it's, it's going to be an electronic booklet, I'm not sure we're going to print them, but we might, and, and it will basically tell them everything about how to use their new building, kind of like an owner's manual for your new building, but for them specifically as teachers, like the science teacher, how do you, what's the deal with this hood, why is it doing this, you know, how, all the things you need to know when you take over this, these high-tech buildings, I mean, there's movable partitions, there's all kinds of things that they don't have now, so they will have them here, so it's going to be very exciting.
That's so exciting, I just, I want to thank Gloria, your team, I want to thank Rogers O'Brien for all of the hard work that you've done to get us here and on time and in this amazing building, and I remember when Mitch was talking about this wall and this winding staircase and talking how it was just this like construction kind of anomaly, and they'd never done it before, and this was really kind of worked those details out, and I, I just kept thinking, this is like the art museums that you see in Europe, these are the type of staircases that you see when you go there, and anyway, just the attention to detail, thank you. O'Connell Robertson, thank you for putting a coffee bar in for our high school, that is incredible, and I just think it's those little touches of the coffee bar for Waco High, the, when we look at the puppet theater for Kendrick, I, I am just, I, I think those type of details, they matter, right, because they tell our kids and our staff that they matter, and so I'm just so thankful for this work, I just, I look at it and I'm just so proud, so proud of the work that Gloria, you and your team, and our construction crew and our architects have put this kind of dream together, and I could not be more proud of this, it was a historic bond, and, and really being, I told Gloria, I saw her the other day, and I thought, on time and a thin budget are two of my favorite words, and that is, in and of. And that is in and of itself quite a feat. So I just want to thank you so much for being such great partners and really.
I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
I was just going to say also how open you guys were, have been, to allowing folks to come in and take tours and how you stop things and walk folk around. That was really an experience for me the first time that I went. And I've been back, I guess, three times since. And you, the people doing that construction, you guys have just been so open and friendly. For this old fella, I appreciated it.
Yeah. So I look forward to seeing the inside in person and live. And I think those teachers are probably equally as excited to get inside and start setting up. So thank you so much. Really thank you for being great partners. Thank you for envisioning a beautiful campus that fosters 21st century learning environments, flexible classrooms, beautiful spaces, spaces that were, I mean, it's just, thank you for ticking all the boxes. I appreciate it.
If there's some MC Hammer pants in that time capsule, one of you's going to have to wear them around for the day.
That's awesome. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item number 12, announcements. Oh, we get to see Dr. King Knowles here.
All right. Good evening, President Cordowick, members of the board, Dr. Spicer. I am, I've been entrusted to serve in Chief Cox's stead to share announcements. So as Dr. Spicer shared in her superintendent's report, we are just one week from graduation ceremonies and the excitement of the countdown to the end of a successful school year is in full effect. The graduation stage goes up tomorrow morning. Tuesday 20th, we will, May 20th, we will host a breakfast honoring our 2023, I'm sorry, 20, yeah, 2024, 2025 retirees at the AC Hotel in town. Graduation rehearsals and senior luncheons take place the first part of next week. And just as we heard in the updates for Waco High School, asking everybody to send their positive well wishes to Waco High as they continuously simultaneously serve our students through the end of the year and continue packing in preparation for their move, which is really right around the corner at this point. And the campus, if you've been there at all, is abuzz with excitement right now. I plan to be over there myself with a couple of our colleagues in tennies and jeans tomorrow to help them label and continue packing boxes. Wednesday, May 21st and Thursday, May 22nd are our final days of school for this 24-25 school year, both of which are early release days. We are excited to watch our Waco ISD seniors walk the stage. That takes place Thursday, I can't believe I'm saying this. Thursday, May 22nd is Waco High School's graduation and Friday is University High School's graduation at the Waco ISD Sports Complex Stadium, both of which are at 7:30. Monday, May 6th is a district holiday in observance of Memorial Day. And that concludes the May 25, 2025 board announcements. Thank you.
Beautiful job. Wonderful. Thank you so much. That was very eloquently done. Okay, so, oh, Mr. Vedanya, yes.
I just wanted to, a lot of people don't know Jesse Botay was retiring. I just wanted to bring him out so people can see who's behind the camera and.
The man, the man behind the.
If he's over.
Jesse, are you there?
When he leave?
There he is.
Yay.
Come out here, Jesse.
Come onto the front. He is often behind the camera. Thank you, Mr. Vedanya.
Jose, I'm glad you said that because I was going to say that. He's always, he's always been here. He's always been here. And a lot of you know Elaine, who was here forever. And I got to teach with his daughter at Waco High. And I know he's as excited as I am that his grandson will be attending Hillcrest next year. So he's, he won't be too far from us. Also, I do want to say, he's not here. Dr. Edison is retiring. And I know there's lots of people retiring, but he's been a friend of mine for a really long time. And a lot of people don't know that he grew up in South Waco and he's got a very, very inspiring story. But he's been, he's been wonderful. And whenever I think of a Waco ISD graduate, I always think of someone like Dr. Edison. So I want to thank him for his years of service with us.
Okay, great. We are, the board is going to go into closed session at 10:15 pursuant of the Texas Open Meeting at Government Code 551, 071, 072, 074, 076, and 089. We will reconvene in open session and move on to item 15, which is the reorg. Yes, we'll do that. Okay. We're going to meet upstairs real quick. Okay, the board has reconvened at 11:27. And we will move on to item number 15, the item I have been waiting all evening to do. The reorg, consider, discuss, and take appropriate action regarding the reorganization of the Board of Trustees. And I am nominating Jose Vedanya for president, Jeremy Davis for vice president, and Jim Patton for secretary.
Make a motion to, I move.
What? Do we do one at a time? You can do slate or you can do it one at a time. Okay, so Mr. Gilery moves that we appoint.
It'll be Jose Vedanya for president, Jeremy Davis, vice president, Jim Patton, secretary.
Oh, wow. Thank you, Mr. Gilery.
I had to move in deep for Jim Patton.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Ooh, Mr. Bledsoe coming in for the second. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Here you go, Mr. Vedanya. Welcome to the gavel.
He's going to need a bigger hammer like one of those thorns.
Yeah, so, yeah, just so thankful again to work with each of you. And this is going to be my last board meeting. I have served in and around Waco ISD for 25 years and am so thankful that I had the opportunity to be on this board. I think it was a hard decision, but I think it's one that was necessary at this time. And so I just really wanted to thank each of you, really from the bottom of my heart, for working with me and just have learned some great lessons along the way. And so I'm just so thankful for each of you. And Taylor, hardly known you very long, but I just, we had a conversation and I was just so encouraged by having that conversation with you and hearing just kind of the wisdom that kind of poured from your mouth in terms of leadership and just building bridges and just your heart for this district. I just, I really do feel like we have seen tremendous accomplishments. I mean, I even think the bond, $355 million bond for five new schools. I think it is a physical representation of what this board can accomplish and this district can accomplish. And it's what our kids need. And I think that is, I'm just so excited because I know that this board is going to put kids first in every decision. And so just, I want to thank you guys. It was really such an honor.
Can I follow up on that?
Yeah.
We've had a lot of conversations since I've been on the board. A lot of them, some of them a bit more heated than others, I guess. Lots of disagreements, but I feel like every decision and every argument we've ever had has always been with the kids' best interests in mind. And as a parent of four Waco ISD students, I really appreciate the time you've given to this district.
Angela.
I want to say a few things.
Oh, no.
Stephanie. Stephanie, a long pregnant pause. I just wanted to see if I could make you sweat. No, truly, it has been.
You got Keith sweating though, but.
It has been an honor to serve with you. You have led this board with grace. You have led this board with honesty and you have led this board with forward thinking, which being the only female on a board full of males with strong dominant personalities, you have been the glue that has kept this board cohesive. And for your grace and for your generosity, I just want to say thank you. And I feel that my life is better having known you and I have certainly learned so many things from your leadership. So thank you from my heart.
Thanks, Jim.
I didn't make you cry.
Yeah, I'm kind of tear ready.
You know, you know, I'm not, I'm not going to be long.
That's.
But I feel like it's not fair that the boardroom is empty because I've seen you send a lot of people out and, you know, with some really kind words and thoughtful words. And I feel like you deserve that. And so I hate that the boardroom is empty right now. But kind of what I think Angelo was saying, that we've had some hard discussions, but we've always kept it cordial and we stay close throughout it. And I can appreciate you for that. And I know while you're leaving, you've always put your family first and you're doing it now. You know, I tip my hat to your daughter and your husband, you know, getting you home and you being there for them. That's just who you are. You've always been that person since I've known you and you had your kids over at Waco Charter School. And so, where is it, Waco Charter School? You were at Waco.
I met you at Waco Charter School.
You were doing stars.
Yes.
You were doing stars. But, no, but again, I think my biggest regret right now is that you deserve the applause. You deserve the standing ovation for the time you put into this district.
Keith, you're going to make me cry. Thank you. I really appreciate that. Thank you, Keith. I really, I really appreciate those kind of words.
I want to also, we have a little something for you. Those roses that you moved in the.
Yes, they're beautiful back here.
That's from administration. And then also we have a little something from the board and from administration to say we love you. We appreciate you. Thank you for your service. Thank you for your heart and your passion and advocacy for us, for our students, for the community. And we know your work is not done. We know that you'll still be cheering and even input and feedback. And so just thank you just for everything you've done for me since I've been here, but just for your time on the board and in the classroom and just all the things you've done for Waco, Texas. Thank you.
Thank you. You got this.
Yeah, well, I just want to say thank you. I didn't, you know, I didn't think I'd be in this position this quick.
No one ever does.
But ever since I got on the board, you've always been supportive, helpful, always there to talk to. You know, like I text you the other day, you have one last minute.
I was like, it sounds like I'm dying.
But just, just thank you. Thank you for everything. Thank you for, like Jim said too, serving with, keeping all these guys in order. I don't think I'm going to be able to do that.
You can, Jose. You can. I'm believing you.
Yeah, I echo what everyone else said. It's been great serving with you. I appreciate, you know, the time you put in the district. I also appreciate our conversations, which I know sometimes it goes from a 10 to a 2 to a 7. But I feel like we always try to find some piece of common ground and that's something I appreciate it, true common ground. And because we say that a lot, but we don't really practice that. So I appreciate you for attempting. We always try to find that common ground, so I appreciate that. And I didn't really know that you were the only woman in a group of guys because you're dominant and bold and you stand up for yourself. You know, shout out to you for holding it down.
What? Be the Wild West, oh Lord.
Stephanie, it has been real, one board meeting. But just as someone who has been a fan of this school district and you've seen this district through a lot in your tenures on the board. And I am very, very grateful as someone who's had kids, who's a fan of the district, who's a product of the district, who has kids in the district, very thankful for the grace and that you've shown as a leader in some really turbulent times for our school district. So thank you. We will miss you and very, very grateful for you.
Well, thank you, Taylor. I was going to get up and clap, Melissa. Thank you, guys. I, yeah, I'm so honored. Yes, let's do it. Our last picture. We're closed at 11:37.